Okay, good morning, everyone. Please mute your microphones. We're hearing background noise. Please mute your microphone, everyone. I'm going to start this morning by reading the preamble. Please mute your microphone, everyone. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law, under COVID-19 emergency declaration, notice of meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions, under the purview of the City Planning Department, conducts its meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Abstentions from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone in the meeting have the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activate it by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. Meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. Our proceedings are also being streamed via YouTube and TV20 for public view. We have provided a link to the meeting for those who wish to speak on a particular case via our website and email. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comments. Please mute your microphones. Sorry Director Collier. If we see your microphone unmuted. It was Colin User 4. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Full screen, please. At this time, I would like to take 60 seconds to have a moment of silence and acknowledgement with regards to what's happening in our nation. We can't continue to go on with business as usual. So for the next 60 seconds, I would ask that you reflect on the events that have occurred this past and think about how you can be a positive change. So for the next 60 seconds, I would like for us all to be silent before we begin conducting the business of this city. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The meeting is yours. Michael?
Thank you, Freddie. Call the roll, Michael.
Bowen. Downing.
Paul.
Present.
Sly.
Present. We have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Michael. The first is a zoning map amendment. It's an unnumbered ordinance, councilman zone, changing the use height and area and height district of parcels of land south of Cleveland Royal Shoreway between West 79th and West 70th Street. Who do we have to speak to this?
Good morning. Shannon Leonard, City Planner. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commission. Next slide, please. So this rezoning really came about from councilman zone as well as our neighborhood planner, Adam Davenport, to kind of look at this area and try to change some of this legacy zone, industrial zoning, to change some of that into residential, to ensure that our side streets are more residential in nature and so that we can maintain, preserve, and pretty much promote Detroit to be more like the commercial economic corridor, the spine of the neighborhood, as well as to preserve some of the pocket green spaces in this neighborhood. Next slide, please. So the current zoning, as you can see here, is a mix of industrial. There is some two-family, multifamily, and a little bit of local retail business. The local retail business that you've seen north of this rezoning proposal was done through a map change back in 2017. That area was zoned general industry. So kind of just going forward with that and moving this area into more residential within the side streets off of Detroit. This will help improve the quality of life for the neighbors as well as follow some of the citywide plans, as well as the neighborhood plans for this area. So I'm going to walk you through each section. Next slide, please. So this is the proposal. Again, as you'll notice, more residential along the side streets and to maintain Detroit to be the commercial corridor. Next slide, please. The first sections are the green sections that you see on the lower left-hand side. These are already established parks or rather gardens in the neighborhood. And really, we just want to maintain these community gardens as green space to improve the quality of life for our neighborhoods. Next slide, please. In this area, you'll see it is already zoned two-family. The proposal here is simply to change the area. As you know, lot sizes in Cleveland are smaller than normal. And this really just kind of helps to promote infill housing that fits today's housing demand and costs. So we're just increasing the B area to a D area. That's basically half times lot size to one times lot size. Next slide, please. The second here with the two-family, as you'll notice on both the left-hand side and the right-hand side of your screen, these areas are currently zoned semi-industry. This is really important along West 76th Street in that our code states that you cannot have residential units within 200 feet of a general industry within a semi-industry district. So if something were to happen to these homes or they wanted to refinance, they would struggle due to the non-performing use guidelines in our code saying that if 50% or more was destroyed, they would not be able to rebuild because they're within 200 feet of the general industry district. You'll notice slightly to the west, there's a GI district. And then along West 73rd Street, this is just about two parcels that is south of the Battery Park development. And we just really wanted to bring them in line with their current land uses. So again, the proposal for these two areas is two-family residential with an area of D and a height district of one. Next slide, please. The next is replacing this resident industry that you see in the light purple on the left-hand side of your screen along West 73rd to multifamily residential. Again, the neighborhood wants to maintain its resident nature along the side streets here. These warehouses are no longer being used as such. And as such, the councilman really has asked us to change this to multifamily. Next slide, please. And again, this is a little bit further north, south of the local retail you see there. As you may remember, back in probably around January, February, a proposal came through to build new apartments, multifamily, south of the Shoreway. And this is really just to kind of buffer that turn it multifamily residential. The height district in this area currently is a three, so we're reducing it from 115 feet to 60 feet to match the northern section. As well as height was a real concern with their neighbors. And so this is going to match that. Next slide, please. And again, as you see in the red on the right-hand side of your screen, that is currently zoned semi-industry. The proposal is really just to change this to local retail. This will allow the current business to continue as it is, but it'll also provide a buffer to residential uses as well as match the current zoning at right there on the corner of Detroit and West 73rd. Next slide, please. Next slide. I think you skipped one, Maurice. And this last section here is the urban form overlay along West 73rd, which is that thin green line you see on the right-hand of your screen. This will allow for new infill development to match the current setback along West 73rd Street. As you'll notice in the picture on the bottom left-hand corner, the setback is fairly close to the street. The urban form overlay will help encourage that as well as create a high degree of walkability, as well as pedestrian-oriented building features, as well as enhancing the public safety by minimizing conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles. Next slide, please. And as you can see, this is the general proposal. We met with the Edgewater Hill Block Club back before this was supposed to go before you, back in March, prior to the pandemic. And we had a good discussion. And so we just really want to promote this, to promote the residential along our side streets, keep Detroit the commercial corridor, and preserve some of the pocket green spaces to enhance the quality of life. There are, I think, some residents here as well as the councilmen and the neighborhood planner for this area. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So maybe we hear some testimonies from the sponsors, councilmen, and the CDC? Who's here to speak to that?
Matt Zone is here, the local council person, but I would defer to, if there's a representative from the Detroit Trade Community Development Organization.
Mr. Bango, I believe, is signed up to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I'll speak until somebody jumps in here. I do want to acknowledge, first of all, Shannon, thank you for the thorough explanation. Kudos to the neighborhood planner in the community, Adam Davenport. Also Sue Clement, who's one of the co-chairs of the Block Club, is on the phone as well. She may maybe, for the sake of brevity, she could maybe make comment on behalf of other residents who may be on the phone. Just so the commission is aware, we pushed this information out virtually to let people know that this meeting was happening this morning. And as Shannon said, her and Adam Davenport representatives, the local CDC appeared with the Block Club to answer any questions prior to the pandemic really shutting us down. Mr. Chairman and commission members, this plan is consistent with the Gordon-Swarre's District Master Plan that we undertook in 2015, which was adopted by this planning commission. We've had extensive outreach in this area, and I am wholeheartedly supportive of this zoning change. And I would defer to Adam Davenport.
Thank you, Councilman. Adam, are you on the phone?
Yes. Mr. Chair.
I am on the phone. Thank you. Thanks, Shannon and Councilman, for some detail on the plan itself. I think the one thing, if you're not familiar with this area, just to the north of this aerial is Battery Park, which was obviously a general industry district with over 16 buildings related to that factory. So there's a lot of legacy semi-industry and resident industry, which is why we have this carryover from the previous zoning. So I think it's smart to fix that outright. It's also smart to fix that based on what Shannon explained with refinancing some of these houses over in the, on 76th and 73rd. And then given development patterns that are taking place in Battery Park, it's also smart to read that right into the wall and change some of these parcels to multifamily and keep it kind of consistent with what Battery Park is. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Mr. Chairman, we have several residents that have signed up to comment on this project. If you are attending right now and you'd like to speak, please use the raise hand feature so we can identify you and.
First, hear from proponents, those people in favor of the zoning change. We'll hear from proponents, those people in favor. And then after that, we'll hear from opponents, those people against the zoning change.
Very good.
Keep your comments to three minutes or less so we can move on to other matters too. So proponents, anyone, please raise your hand.
Yes, we have a Sue Clement, and I'll unmute your microphone, and you may speak.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for considering this. I definitely want to say that as the co-block leader for Edgewater Hill, we definitely appreciate the change in the zoning for multifamily. I also appreciate that we're going to try to keep those green spaces as they are. That's a really important component of our neighborhood. And so I appreciate that, and that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other proponents for this zoning change?
Okay, let's move on to opponents, people against the zoning change.
Mr. Chairman, I am hearing no more raised hands.
Is there anyone that just wants to ask questions in general from the public?
And we are, again, not hearing any raised hands.
Okay, I'll slam down the virtual gavel. And commission members.
I move to approve August Fluker.
I'll second. Stop me, Paul.
Second. Further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor, submit your name.
Hi.
Any opposed, sign.
I'm sorry. Actually, we're calling the names for each vote so that we know who is voting. So I'm going to call each name.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Thank you, Michael. The next is the lot consolidation lot split. This is for permanent parcel number 01613117 3209 West 46th Street. This was tabled. Are we taking action on this today? Do we remove it from the table?
Chairman, I believe that Ramirez, he wanted to be present. Let's remove that one.
So can we have most of the votes?
Please mute your microphone if you're not speaking.
So moved. Sly.
Second. Downing.
Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Sly. Yes.
So who do we have to present this today, please?
Mr. Chairman, we have Jorge Ramirez. Mr. Ramirez, I believe, is online. We'll unmute you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, sir.
So pretty much the plan that we are thinking for the parcel is. Yeah, we just want to parcel the 3211 and the 3209.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Moss with his hand raised.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. This is Matt Moss. I'm the neighborhood planner for the area. I don't have any particular concern with this lot split with just one exception. I would just ask that the, my only concern would be that parcel A, we'd really like to suggest that that have an access easement for vehicular access from the rear parcel because I don't want there to create a situation where we're required to approve a front-loaded garage in the, in the future. You know, if this house is ever torn down or replaced and the desire is to have some off-street parking, I'm just concerned that this parcel configuration might require that solution if there isn't an easement in place.
Okay. Is the applicant okay with that?
Mr. Ramirez?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Let's see. Sorry, I'm explaining to my father. He's the one that's, he's the applicant.
Are you okay with having an access easement, just in case?
So that's basically like the parking spot?
It's just in case someone builds something different, that they would have access to a garage instead of having a front-loaded garage. It would be a rear-loaded garage. Is that right?
That's what, yeah, that's what I'm, what I'm suggesting. And I'd be happy to connect with the applicant after the meeting to go over the details of how that can work to their advantage.
Okay.
Because that backspace is only for the 3211.
This is Councilman Sly. Just to, may I ask a question to clarify to Matt Moss? What you're saying is to maintain an access easement on the part of parcel B that extends down to the roadway so that if parcel A ever needed to get to the back, they could drive on the driveway that's actually on parcel B? That's, is that what you're saying?
Essentially, yes. My concern is not necessarily with what the applicant is likely intending to do. I just worry for the long-term future if this parcel configuration were to remain and for whatever reason, the house on parcel A is, is replaced that without an easement, that parcel isn't large enough to have its own driveway. That's my only concern. I'm thinking long-term.
Matt? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, we have no one else with their hands raised for this project?
Okay, commission members?
This is Sly. I'm comfortable with what Matt is suggesting, but I want to make sure that Mr. Ramirez and his father understand it prior to any vote. I don't want to get ahead of ourselves.
Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. Go ahead.
That's it.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Fluker would like to comment.
I agree. I just, someone needs to get some sort of acknowledgement from the applicant. We haven't heard that yet.
So basically, parcel A, they only got that little front spot, that front area, and then on the side, the driveway that, and then that goes around. Parcel, parcel A?
That's a great feeling.
I think an easier way to explain it may be just to say, are you comfortable with allowing for a shared driveway between the two properties?
Happy to have a shared driveway. Driveway, yes.
I'm having a hard time hearing Mr. Ramirez.
The thing is that we won't really have space to come in, though. The, yeah, the entryway is too narrow.
Right, so could, could it be a shared driveway just so someone could get to the back of A? But they, they wouldn't be able to park next to the house and block access for the house that's currently on the back of the property? It'd just be allowed to be in and out?
It would be for ingress and egress only.
Mr. Fluker has his hand raised.
I think they're not understanding. We're not talking about a driveway. We're talking about creating an easement on paper should the need arise in the future. So I think that's, I think that's the impasse here. We're not talking about something physical right now. We're talking about an easement that's recorded with the county. It's no more complicated. Nothing, nothing may happen with that. But I think that's the misunderstanding.
The back of parcel A, there's like a shed on that corner.
Yes.
So you're saying that if they could park back there, but there's a shed that way?
No, what we're saying is that it would be for ingress and egress only. If someone needed to get to the back of a building, not to park their car, but to get back there, maybe to pick something up, they could drive back there, do whatever they need to do and leave. Just for ingress and egress. Or if they took down the shed and put a garage there, they could park in their own garage, but they couldn't use the driveway to park on.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
I would be happy to connect with the applicant to further explain and go over the details to help clarify as well.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Ramirez?
What was that? Hello?
Yeah, is that okay with you if Matt Moss connects with you after the meeting and goes over with you, and then we take a vote the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So that's what we'll do. Can I have a motion to table to the next meeting?
So move Downing to ta, move to table.
Second Fluker.
Okay, so that's a move to table to date certain, which is next meeting. Can you call the roll, Michael?
Bowen.
Yes.
Coming. Fluker.
Paul.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it's tabled and it's a date certain, which is our next planning commission meeting. And Matt, thank you very much for, in advance, for connecting up with Mr. Ramirez and explaining that to him. And if you have some documentation that's worked well in the past, if you can share that with him, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Okay, permanent parcel number 00706 Okay, permanent parcel number zero zero seven, zero six, zero nine, three, two one five four, West Thirty-Eighth Street. Who's here to present this?
Mr. Chairman, we have Richard Zeharansky. Hope I got that last name right. Sorry about that.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Okay, great. What I'm here, I just am proposing to have a lot split located at two one five four, West Thirty-Eighth Street. And this, the, the current lot has both frontage on Thirty-Eighth Street and Fortieth Place. And what I'm proposing is we split that lot and have an address off of Fortieth Place. The, the current condition of that house is much different. We have done an extensive renovation to the house you're looking at now. And so it, it's a much different view than what you're looking at there.
Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bozak has his hand raised.
Michael? Thank you. I just wanted to give you a little background information here. You gave this conditional approval on June twenty-first, twenty nineteen. At that time, the applicant was proposing to develop a new house in the back there. And also had initially talked about putting a garage for the front house on that property. So there was some talk about an easement. There was talk about a site plan. So those things were said, and then Mr. Zeharansky came back to me and said, "I don't want to do any of that. I just want to split the lot and I want to sell off the parcel." And that's why he's here today, even though he had already received conditional approval for this.
Got you. So this is a change. Thank you, Michael. Commission members?
Mr. Chairman, we have Donna Gregonis from, I believe Detroit Charway.
Thank you.
Good morning. This is Donna Gregonis with Ohio City Incorporated.
Oops, sorry about that.
Oh, no, it's okay. There's a lot of places here. Good morning. And so I have a question about this. If it were to be approved, I mean that, that everything would likely be loaded off of one central curb cut still that comes off of Kiefer Court? I guess that's my question. And what is your long-term goal with this plan? I, you know, this is sort of new for me to look at.
Not familiar with, I'm not familiar with Kiefer Court. This property is, is frontage on West Thirty-Eighth and the back of the lot is on Fortieth Place. So if the lot split is approved, any future development on the new lot would have a place address. Similar to the, what you're looking at now, it'd be the two five four, West Thirty-Eighth. You look lots to the north, you have an apartment building on Thirty-Eighth and on Fortieth. So whatever future development happens on this potential lot, it would look similar to that, I would imagine.
Another question, excuse me. Have you gone to Block Club with this new plan?
I'm not familiar with the Block Club. I don't live in the current home and I'm not familiar with the Block Club. I know I've talked to many residents in the area and there doesn't seem to be any opposition.
Mr. Chairman, we also have Matthew Moss, our neighborhood planner, with his hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Similarly, my only concern with this, with lots splits like this, especially when they cut access from parcels fronting main streets from Abbeys, is that if there's, as long as there's an access easement, I think that's an essential requirement, frankly, to avoid the need in the future if there's a request for a front-loaded garage.
Mr. Chairman, Donna is asking, where is the access?
Sorry, where would be the access if you did split this lot? That is my question. I guess Matt has a question.
The access to the new property or to the existing?
And the existing.
Access on two, what, right now, currently, there is no driveway in this house. It's all street parking. So two one five four would have street parking and the access to the new lot would be off of Fortieth Place. Again, very similar to what you're, you're looking at there.
Anyone else here to speak?
Mr. Chairman, we have no one else with their hand raised.
Commission members?
Miss Paul with her hand raised?
Hello, I just had a question. So with regards to not discussing this with the Block Club, especially since the presenter doesn't live there, is there a concern with that? Speaking to some residents, but really not having a formal presentation to the Block Club?
Go ahead, Donna.
Yeah, that's my major concern with this is, yeah, generally, we like to take projects like this that are having lot splits to the Block Club and have a formal presentation so that everyone's on the same page in the neighborhood. Especially the surrounding neighbors.
I, for one, would be more comfortable in, in weighing in on a decision once it's been reviewed with the Block Club.
Mr. Chairman, we have Councilman Sly, I believe, has his hand raised.
Thank you, Michael. Just two thoughts. One, this is, correct, this is the same street where we recently had a townhome plan, and there was some pretty active deliberation among, is, is this just south of Lorraine, West Thirty-Eighth?
Yes, that's correct.
So, so I, I guess my, my other concern is that I appreciate Mr. Moss's point about needing to preserve easements so that, you know, people don't have front-loaded garages. Parking on the street doesn't particularly bother me, but if, if the lot is split and now there's a lot with West Fortieth as the frontage, is there enough width on that property to have a driveway? Or are we creating a situation where there would have to be a front-loaded garage because there's not enough room in the right-of-way for street parking on that alley? So, so I'm, I'm a little unclear on, I'm not as concerned about the West Thirty-Eighth fronting side as much as I would be about the West Fortieth fronting side.
To, to answer your question, yes, there, there is room for a driveway. Actually, in the future, in the future, whoever would buy West Thirty-Eighth Street could potentially go in front of the planning commission and get an easement for a curb cut. And there's room for a driveway on West Thirty-Eighth Street as well because we did tear down the addition that was put onto the original home. And as far as my, I guess my only comment to the neighborhood plan, I, I appreciate the sentiment, but, you know, we bought this property and have done an extensive renovation. And we've invested over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a renovation to the existing home. So our goal and concerns i- is to help the neighborhood. You know, we bought a dilapidated home and it brought it back to life. And frankly, it'll be one of the nicest houses on the street. So we, we do want to contribute to the neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman, we have Matt Moth, Moss with his hand raised.
Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry to jump in again, but I want to, again, thank the applicant for their investment. It's always great to have people willing to invest in properties in Ohio City and in the city of Cleveland. I, again, I just want to reiterate my concern that was further added on to by Commissioner Sly that, that I, I just want to avoid long-term, the, the, any concern if there's a future owner at two one five four, West Thirty-Eighth, who now wants to provide off-street parking, either for themselves or for a tenant, that without an excess easement from West Fortieth Place, it would likely require a, a, a garage solution that zoning, isn't compliant with the zoning code because, or, or would require substantial alteration to that structure, just given the size of that building and the proposed lot dimensions. It's a huge concern of mine, and I think we've done a lot in working with the residents in the CDC in this area to really preserve the character of these streets. And I just think we should be intentional about that in making this decision today, too.
So Matt, have you worked with this applicant?
I reached out to the applicant through the CDC as well to make this request in the past, but I have not had an extensive conversation with them one-on-one.
All right. Well, it sounds like we're not moving very quickly anywhere. So maybe what we need to do is table it to the next planning commission meeting and the applicant and Matt get together at the CDC. Next step, so.
When? That you reached to me. I, I, I thought I would have responded if I, if I would have got that message. How did you reach out to me?
It was my understanding that I've been working with Shaw and Donna Gregonis at Ohio City Incorporated. They really can't hear anything.
Please mute your microphone if you're not speaking.
I've been in contact some months ago with Ashley Shaw and Donna from Ohio City Incorporated. And they had, I believe they were attempting to court, to reach out to the homeowner in order, or not the homeowner, the property owner, in order to coordinate any community engagement in terms of what's been going on with this property. I've also gotten emails from neighbors directly who have been asking for information about what's been going on at this property because they see work being done and they're curious.
Lot of work.
Unfortunately, I didn't hear from any of those folks in that group.
Mr. Chair, before we take a vote, I, I, if Mr. Moss, in discussions with the applicant, could go over some of the nuances of parking within our zoning code, because, I mean, if you look over on West Fortieth, those two cars that are parked between the houses, my understanding is that that's actually, that's illegal technically. And I, that this kind of falls into a category of things that we often do, but are not permitted through our code. And that's a larger conversation. We're looking to, you know, broaden our code. But I, I've always been told that we are required to be able to drive to the rear of the property and to park, and that anything outside of that would require a variance. So I, I would, I just want to make sure that however we land on this, the applicant knows that splitting the lots could set us up a situation where creating off-street parking would require a zoning variance. And this body can't guarantee the receipt of that variance. So, so it's, there's, to a certain degree, we're hedging our bets. So if I'm wrong on any of those details, please let me know. I don't think any of them are insurmountable, but I think it's important to understand the totality of the situation as we're coming towards a final decision.
So I go back to the commission members. I can't make a motion or second it, so what's your pleasure?
So I, it's Downing. I moved to table to date certain next city planning commission meeting.
Second.
Fluker.
Motion is second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify, well, call the roll, please.
Bowen. Downing.
Yes.
Fluker. Paul.
Yes.
Sly. Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We're tabling it to the next planning commission meeting. Matt, can you get ahold of the property owner directly and work through those issues with them?
Yes, I'd be happy to meet with them and talk about what our goals are in more detail.
Thank you, Matt.
Do you have my contact information, Matt?
I'll chat you in the webex, if that's okay. We'll, we'll exchange information.
Okay, I, I got to get off this call, so can you, can you chat me right away? So I have another meeting here.
All right. Matt, take care of that, please. All right, we're moving to permanent parcel number zero zero four, zero three, zero four seven, and zero four eight. This is twenty-one fifty-three, West Twentieth Street. Who do we have for this one?
Chairman, we have Wesley Harper.
Hey, Wes.
How you doing? So here to discuss a couple parcels on the block south of Abbey, north of Freeman, on West Twentieth Street in Duck Island. So we're working with Mr. Chura, whose mother lives across the street from the property. He also owns a couple of other properties in the neighborhood and is an existing resident, West Fifth Street in Tremont. So next, next sheet, please. The existing conditions are what you're looking at here. We have a four-unit residential structure to the north. We then have an existing vacant parcel to the south. And these two parcels extend all the way back to the centerline block. South of us, we have an existing retail as well. Mr. Chura also owns the lot north of the existing residential structure at left here. Next page. So here we have an existing site plan showing the four-unit apartment building, which we are currently producing permit drawings for a rehabilitation of that structure. And you have the vacant parcel two one six one, West Twentieth Street. Both are thirty-three feet in dimension along West Twentieth and then go back just under a hundred and thirty feet to the rear. So they're good-sized parcels. As I mentioned, Mr. Chura also owns the lot to the north, two one four seven. Next page. So here what we're proposing is a split of the southern parcel to allow for a five-car garage in the rear of the parcel for the four-unit structure. Above that, we would propose a carriage house, which would be accessed from stair on northern side of that structure. So that would create roughly a twelve-hundred-square-foot carriage house above the, the garage structure. In the, so that would basically create an L-shaped parcel. And with that, you can see that we're proposing a new driveway, which would serve both that five-car garage as well as the two-car garage of a planned, single-family house on the southern parcel. So with that, we would have the, a shared agreement for that new house to the south, allowing them ingress and egress over the driveway. And then we have proper clearances behind the existing house to pull in and out of that. The house to the south, we don't currently have a buyer for that, but we're basically just showing that it's possible to get a roughly nineteen-hundred-square-foot home. You know, assuming a six-foot wide or six-foot deep porch and then some living space on that first floor. So this would most likely be a two-story house as opposed to a three-story townhome typology as a, sometimes in the neighborhood here. So this is where we're at. As I mentioned, Mr. Chura is a member of Duncan and Block Club. He's an active resident in the neighborhood. And I'll open it up to anybody for questions.
Members? Members.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Fluker with his hand raised.
I would just like to commend, uh, your resolution concerning the last split. Considering the, uh, the issues we had with the previous ones, I think this is a, a nice solution that acknowledges, um, the situations that exist when you split lots like this. And, and it's, it's respectful, so I, I appreciate that, Wes.
Thank you, obviously.
So is someone gonna make a motion?
I move approval, this is Slife.
Second, Downing.
Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slife.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Partial number 00329045 and 097. Address is 1822 and 1826 West 44th Street.
Mr. Chairman, we have Ismail Sullivan as the property manager for this project.
Yes.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Is there a reason when you're, that you're sending out invitations that are mine from you?
Excuse me, please mute your microphone if you're not speaking.
Hello, good morning.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, uh, we propose here is, uh, a last split. I'm working with, uh, Riverstone and, um, that, that's, that's a proposal we got, um, this blueprint. Hello?
Yes, sir, we hear you.
Yes. So I say that we proposing a last split. I'm working with Riverstone on the, on this project. A last split for 1826 from 1822.
So there's two separate houses on this?
Yes, it's our two separate houses, uh, it's in a system easement already on the driveway. Um, actually, it's two easements, easement A and easement B, to have a shared driveway. Um, and then we proposing to split. So 1826 parcel B be able to have, um, you know, like a storage area so they can be able to park in front of the garage and put the lawnmower and stuff like that in there.
Maurice, want to go back to the Riverstone's lot split so we can see it?
Is that the slide?
Yeah, this is it. So commission members, if you take a look at this, you can see that you have the ingress and egress easement. It goes back to the garage, and then part of the garage goes with one lot, and where you pull in goes with, uh, the garage doors go with the other lot.
Mr. Fluker with his hand raised? Sir, did you want to speak?
Yes, um, I don't have an issue with, with the strategy, makes sense. My, my concern is by, um, locating that property line may cause a building, um, department or a building code, um, issue with, with, with either one of these properties with regard to how, um, its proximity, the structure's proximity to the property line as relates to firewalls and ratings. Um, and so that's, and it could be a zoning issue, too, so, um, just wanted to point those two things out, that, that could.
I agree with you, August, especially splitting the garage like that. I don't know what it looks like in the garage, but you're exactly right. You could have some issues.
I would like to offer that maybe he, the applicant, um, meet with, 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 you know, Chief Vanover or Plans Examiner to go over this to see if he's not causing some sort of encumbrance on, on the structures that would require him to improve, um, the, the construction of the, of either one of these houses.
Neighborhood planner in this area.
I believe that would be Matt Moss.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Matt, could you work with the, uh, property owner that's looking to do this split and set up a meeting with Tom Vanover, um, so they can make sure we're not doing a last split that violates the building code?
Yes, I'd be happy to help coordinate that.
Ms., uh, Ms. Grigonis is also asking, has this gone to the block club?
Well, Matt.
Hello?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Yes, no, no, we have not been on the block club. We, we spoke to Riverstone and he created the, you know, the plan, the blueprint, and, um, I, you know, the, the, the reason I, um, we splitting this up because the garage is, is right in front or, or the storage area is right in front of the property line for 1826. So it made more sense to have that last plea and build, uh, two-hour or one-hour fire rated wall, I mean, whatever you guys recommend, um, between, right on the property line.
Right. So it, since there's a building code issue involved with this, um, maybe, Matt, you can, uh, bring the applicant through the process so we can help expedite this. Is that okay with you, Matt?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm not aware if, if anyone in building and housing has seen this proposed split yet, but I'd be happy to coordinate, uh, sharing this information with them to see if they have any issues along with the applicant. Um, I think we have, you do that virtually.
Okay, perfect. Thanks so much. So, um, if you can, um, you know, go on the chat and give them your contact information so we can do it right away, I take a motion to table this.
I move to table, um, this applicant's, um, proposal. The caveat that he, he works with Mr. Moss to, to actually unpack what, you know, for, what, what this might mean from a monetary or, or fire code perspective.
Yeah, life safety is very important. Thank you.
A second, Stomi Paul.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Paul.
Slife.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, permanent parcel number 00402110 and 0142001 West 17th Street.
Mr. Chairman, we have Dave Mancini here to speak on behalf of this project.
Yes, this is Dave Mancini via phone. Um, yes, this is just to consolidate, uh, small landlocked lot that we purchased back in February with the, um, other lot. Um, and the purpose is really dependent on what the final grade plan of the house that's to be built. Um, turns out to be, if, if the grading doesn't really affect the small lot that we're consolidating, it'd be cleaned up and left as is.
So these are two lots and you're changing it to one?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Moss wishing to comment.
Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I have some, uh, put some prior information to share about this particular law consolidation request. That parcel in the back, the small, uh, Maurice, if you could go back to the, 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 yeah, that slide, thank you. That small sliver of land at the rear of this property line, it was actually a small landbank parcel. So, uh, we encourage the, the new owner of this parcel to apply for that, to consolidate this into one parcel, because that piece of land, I think, is about 80 square feet, and really just has no business being in the city landbank anymore. Uh, there's nothing we can really do with it. So it just made sense to turn this parcel into a full rectangle again.
Good call, Matt.
I'll move approval, this is Slife.
A second, Downing.
We have a motion and second, further discussion?
Mr. Fluker?
No-brainer.
You said this is a city landbank lot?
Yeah.
And it's being deeded back to, to a property owner?
Yeah, it's just that little sliver in the back.
I can't, it's hard for me to see. I, I have a question. Is that, is that gonna be sold? Is it appraised?
I mean, how is sold? I purchased the, this Dave Mancini, I purchased that sliver of land in, um, February of this year. I just want to consolidate it with the other lot.
You purchased it from the city of Cleveland?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's fine, I just wanted to clarify.
Mr. Chairman, this is specifically, the landbank parcel is specifically the, the really tiny rectangle at the rear of the property. The large parcel on screen is, was privately acquired, to my knowledge.
Call the roll, Michael.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker. Fluker. Yes. Paul.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Permanent parcel number 00418033 and 034. Location is West 6th Street.
Mr. Chairman, we have a Joseph Isabella to, uh, speak, uh, on behalf of this project.
Morning, Joe.
Good morning, uh. I don't know if you want to go through all the slides or not. What I'd like to do is, uh, originally the parcels were each 33 feet in width. One parcel, uh, transferred three feet to the other, making it 36. And what I'd like to do is take that, uh, three-foot section and just replot it to the original parcel. So all the parcels on the west side of West 6th Street that are owned by J. Noel will be 33 feet in width.
I wonder why we're splitting the first place?
I have no idea, um, yeah. Some outside noise. I don't know why they were split originally. When I acquired the parcels, they were already, uh, plotted like that. So maybe a neighbor, you know, picked up three feet or whatever.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we have Khalid from Tremont West wishing to speak.
Khalid?
Yeah, um, I just want to, uh, can you go through that real quick again as far as the, what the current lot is and what you're, you're proposing 33 feet for all the lots? But what's the current size?
One lot is 36 feet and the other is 30.
Okay.
The other four lots on the west side of West 6th Street are 33 feet in width.
And so there's no? And so there's no development plan for those lots? Uh, I know these lots, uh, received a lot of attention from the neighborhood, uh, and, uh, they, there's no development plan at this time for these lots, then?
Well, there, there's currently, there are some parties interested in the lots. Each lot is one or two family units. And for purposes of a side set-off of maintaining five feet for fire ratings, et cetera, we wanted to make those two lots equal in width 33 feet, similar to the other four lots that are, uh, owned by J. Noel.
Okay.
So it really doesn't, it, it returns it to its original plot. That's the intention.
Okay, yeah, I was just trying to get clarity on that because, uh, I know, I know there's a lot of activity around there right now, so, uh, don't want to do something that have to reverse later and, or cause further headaches down the road.
Actually, it makes a lot more sense looking at it because it makes it more regular.
Hmm, okay.
Commission members?
Downing, I move approval.
Paul, second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Let me call the roll, David.
Oh, yeah, uh, call the roll. Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker. Yes. Paul. Slife.
Yes.
Michael, see what happens when you do the same thing too often?
I know, I know what you mean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New townhouse development in a two-family district for primary parcel number 12025007 Wade Park Avenue and Lakeview Road. Who do we have for this one?
Mr. Chairman, we have, we have Dan and we have Hannah from Kines.
Good morning.
Good morning. Gillian, I, I'm also here as well, so I was gonna, uh, start off and just kind of give you an update on where we are since we last met a few weeks ago. Now, so in the meantime, we've taken, uh, the feedback that we received on the last planning commission meeting. Um, we've met with, uh, Sharonda and Director Collier to kind of go over some of the comments, uh, that, that they made in the meeting. Um, we've also met with, uh, neighbor to neighbor, and, uh, they had a lot of positive feedback to give us. We kind of went over our, uh, entire development plan for the area. And, you know, we've been building several single-family houses in the area. We're getting ready to start our first townhouse project in East 120th and Ashbury. So this will be our next step, and we are also working on our redevelopment of the actual Huff Bakery site. Um, it's still very early in the preliminary phase, but this is kind of, you know, our second, this is gonna be our biggest townhouse project, but it'll be our second townhouse project in the area. So we're really trying to work comprehensively so that we can get a cohesive plan for this area. So we've had several conversations, uh, since we last met. We've made some changes to the site, which I'll let Hannah kind of go over to, that I think really speak to some of the concerns that everyone had. And I know one of the things, and I just wanted to bring it up, um, out the gate, is that a lot of people had some safety concerns with the site. And just as a, as a note to everybody, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, I think people always find this surprising, uh, when we were working in Ohio City, there was one year where we filed 23 police reports for vandalism and theft on our job sites. And currently, with all the work that we've done in Glendale, we've only filed one. Um, so I know that safety is always a concern everywhere, but I just kind of wanted to get that out and let the board know that, that is one of the safest areas we are working in.
Uh, if I might interrupt for a minute, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Bozek had pointed out that this was tabled, I believe, at the last meeting. Mr. Bozek?
Uh, yeah, just to clarify, we did not have this on the agenda under new townhouse development in a two-family district for the last meeting. We just had it under design review. It was tabled under design review, so I just want to be clear. Now we're looking at it from the townhouse and the two-family districts, those criteria that are on that sheet that we have, and then it'll have to be heard under design review. So I just want to make that very.
So, so, Michael, um, thanks for bringing that up. What page is this? What page is the design review? Probably should take both together.
Mr. Chairman, I also like to, Mr. Collier would like to comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was going to strongly suggest that you look at this in both the design context and under the auspices of the townhouse district for this reason, because it's in two places on the agenda. I think it's appropriate if we take it all now or we can take it later in the agenda.
I think we should take it all now. I think we should do the design review and because one informs the other.
Correct.
So there's there's two things we need to do. First, I'm going to need to swear in the applicants because we're going to do both the design review and the two house, the new townhome development at two-family district. So if you both can raise your right hand. If somebody swore to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, you shall enter under the penalty of perjury.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Let's take off the design review. It's page 21 on your agenda, commission members. So can I get a motion to remove from the table?
So moved, slide.
Second Downing.
We have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Okay, carry on.
Hannah, do you want to kind of go over the changes that we've made thus far?
Yeah, I actually wanted to start off just by addressing our thoughts on
Is that is that the one you wanted?
If you could get the next slide over sheet. If you could go
Yeah, take, there's a delay.
Thank you. Can we actually keep going forward, please? Keep going. Next slide, please. Okay, this is our project site. We are at the corner of Lakeview Avenue and Wade Park. It is a very long, narrow, rectangular site. The zoning on our site is two-family. Zoning to the west of our site is primarily two-family. To the north, that between pure residential building up in scale. I think that the townhouses will provide a nice at East 120th and Ashbury will hopefully be under construction soon. There are multiple other examples of townhouses in the neighborhood on 118th Street. You go to the next slide, please. Please.
I believe it's up.
Okay, thank you. So we are presenting you a revised site plan since we were here for the last planning meeting. We took in a lot of the comments and tried to back with a site plan that's really value creation for this site and we feel very strongly about it. Just to summarize the changes on Lakeview, we have removed the corner unit that would be Unit 20, I believe, to add a large shared green space that's also an entry point and a water queue shed in the interior of the site that's going to bring visibility from Lake feel more connected to the street and more comfortable for a pedestrian experience. Also, reduce the footprint of the unit in the back of the property on the southern property line to about as small as we possibly make them in order to widen the strip of space between the back of our units and elevated railroads that exist there. So we have been able to widen that and it's now about 15 feet from our building to the wall bridge. You can see we can accommodate more landscaping back. I think it's a much comfortable, safe, and secure working your first group of Nick approval. We, site plan approved, we'll come back for final approval with more detailed rear units is we have added side entries with porches that run on the shared green spaces. So there's three units where you can see those porches opening to the little pocket that exists between buildings. Porches provide a visual cue to Wade Park for pedestrians to see that there are front pores in that part. Thought that was important to increase visibility of this part toward Lakeview. Those are the main changes that we've made to the site plan. And again, we feel that the will address the safety concerns and provide a comfortable pedestrian experience on the site as well as providing a workable floor plan for the want to go through the elevations or if the commission has comments on the site plan, but if we go through the next slides, we can see the revised exterior to the buildings.
Excuse me, Mr. Fluker, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I I still think there needs to be some consideration to a pavement change in in that drive court so that you can acknowledge that someone is walking back there. There there is there's an area, as opposed to just having all concrete or at least change the color or do something that accentuate and acknowledges that people will be walking down there so it doesn't feel like an apartment building for cars, like a double loaded corridor for cars. Again, I'm not asking you to materially change your design. I'm just asking or requesting that you consider how people live, how people move, how people walk.
Yeah. Three crosswalks that cross over that driveline and it's a little hard to see at the scale if you zoom in, but we have designated them to be stamped concrete with a clear difference for where
Not laterally, I'm talking longitudinal where so it runs parallel as well.
In the driveway?
Yep.
We we can certainly be open to adding that. We've done that on previous projects where we we use the stamped concrete to provide a cue for where the pedestrians should be walking when they're in that space. That's definitely something that we are open to.
Especially because us adults were smart enough, I think. However, when you're dealing with adolescents and and kids who are younger, it'll help define that that space, in my opinion. Thanks.
Maurice, can we move forward to the next slide, please? This is from the corner at Lakeview. See the corner units. Next slide, please.
Mr. Collier, did you have a comment? You're muted.
Go ahead and continue and then take me after they're done. Thank you.
Very good.
This is the view looking at the units stretching down Wade Park. Next slide, please. These are the interior units. We have reconfigured the facades a little bit since you previously saw them, so a little covered entry. And there will be more, again, as I mentioned, room for landscaping in that area of the site. Next slide, please. This is the view into the site from opened up that corner and you start please. Actually, if we could go back to the most productive slide to stop on. We will be coming back, final proof on them. Thank you. I'll defer to Director Collier's comments.
All right, thank you, everyone. So a couple of points I want to make about this since the conversation last week, and there were a couple of points that were, I think, really serious sticking points, particularly with respect to the the safety concerns. And we had some dialogue this week about this site and what you can do to better ensure that there is a sense of safety. The particular concern was around the rear units facing the tracks and how you would have this long, narrow corridor. And the applicants outlined a suggestion that I had made from the last meeting, which really was to open up the Lakeview corner, which provides you a significant view shed into that corridor so you don't feel like you're walking necessarily down an alley with no visibility from the main street. The other building configuration was shrank a little bit to allow for about 13 feet in depth between the the walkway by the rail tracks and the actual units themselves. And then the other point that I wanted to emphasize was the fact that outside of how the buildings layout and opening up the site to better view sheds, you know, lighting and other things need to be enhanced in order to assure that sense of safety. The other thing is, many of you may be familiar with the WXE development at the corner of 118th and Euclid. It's a similar configuration where you have the entry units to the rear of the site actually facing a wall and you have this sort of interior court. That worked pretty well given the site configurations. And you can see, this is a relatively narrow space to to work with, but a relatively significant parcel. So from our perspective at this point in August, I think you were spot on with your commentary regarding and situating the walkways because, you know, even though you may have these, you know, walk walking paths per se, you know, people are creatures of habit and, you know, they often are going to kind of take crazy ways to get to Wade Park or or Lakeview. So you're going to have to, you know, provide that, you know, a flexibility with respect to how you can treat the ground plane, kind of guide people the best you can. So I think that was a a comment that was spot on. But from a staff perspective, I think, given the site restraints that have been made, that this is this is in a much better place than it was, I think, last week with particularly addressing those safety concerns that that was highlighted as one of the sticking points. Thank you.
All right, there's one more thing I just wanted to add, too, is we had a conversation with Councilman Conwell yesterday as well and forwarded the plans over to him. He was going to try to make it this morning. I don't know that he's on, but he was very excited about this project.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one else with their hands raised at this point?
Okay, this is for this for schematic approval, Mr. Chairman? Okay, anyway, I'm 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 going to try and do this. I'm trying to pull up another file so I know what for 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 the townhouse code designation, I move to to approve as presented.
Mr. Chairman, we do have two people with their hands raised at this point? Mr. Chairman? You're muted.
Muted somehow. So who has a hand raised?
So we have Ms. Shefton and we have our staff, Shannon Leonard. Go ahead, you're muted.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning. This is Chris Shefton, Director of Real Estate Development for Famicos Foundation. Just wanted to thank the Canes team as well as City Planning for taking some additional time to come up with a solution that provides additional green space and a better view shed for safety. And we're excited for this project to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have also Ms. Leonard?
Yes, this is Shannon Leonard from City Planning, the zoning section. So for this to be for the conditional use of site plan specific, I did want to remind you that we did add the 10-foot specific map setback along this lot a few months ago for this project, as well as we're working on a rezoning proposal for this area that we've moved through with the CDC and still working on it. But the proposal calls for this area to be multifamily in the future. So I just wanted to just add that to this for you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. So we have a motion to approve.
A second, Paul.
A second, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Okay, for new townhouse district for approval, Bowen.
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Yes.
Slide. Yes. And then we also have design review.
So now design review, and this is for schematic design. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve the design. The caveat that the applicant investigate the pavement change to accommodate pedestrian flow across the site.
I'll second Downing.
Motion's okay, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Downing.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Yes.
Good luck. Look forward to seeing the final result. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have Brian with his hand raised. Brian?
No, I just joined the meeting. My hand is not raised. I'm Councilman Brian Moni.
Okay, thank you. Just didn't want to miss you.
As we're transitioning, a quick, just a point of clarification. Does anyone know if we have permitting approval and design approval over the Hough Bakery site? I know it's split between Cleveland and East Cleveland, and I think it has an East Cleveland parcel number.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Given any area of that site that's in the city of Cleveland, we have jurisdiction over. If it's a bit new construction or any alterations to the exterior. So if it's in Cleveland, yes. We do not have jurisdiction if a portion of the site is in another city. I will do some digging on that, but I would imagine that we can't decision a parcel that sits in another jurisdiction.
I think that the buildings actually have in Cleveland, have in East Cleveland. So that'll be an interesting one. So let's think through that. If we know it's coming down the pike, how that works.
Okay, so this is townhouse in a two-family districts, permanent parcel number 00708, 138 and 067, West 34th place. Who's here for this, Maurice?
Mr. Chairman, we have Dan Direco. Can you hear me? Yes, we can, sir.
Okay, yeah. So do you have any slides on this that I've?
Okay, so just tell me when you want me to advance them. I'll be more than happy to.
All right, thank you. So the existing brick building is right behind Planet Fitness. It's the, I had renovated that. It's a two-family that I have kept. I don't know if you're familiar with it, behind Planet Fitness. So what I'd like to do is I own the property all the way to Kuiper Court, and I wanted to build three smaller, fee simple townhomes that I wanted to keep and rent out. It'd be roughly around 1,150 square feet. So we can finish off this corner. And, you know, I'd have some green space in the front with a walk in front. The four-car parking we already have for the building already for the tenants there. So I'm going to finish off this project on the corner. You can advance. So looking from 33rd, you would see the three units and advance one more. And then from 34th place, we'd have the garages loading from 34th. You can advance again. So yeah, keep going. One more. Okay, that's it. Okay, you can back back up to the plot plan if you want. Yeah, so that, so right now the front of the brick building is facing 33rd right now. And that's why I want to keep the townhomes also there. And plus, it affords me the ability to have green space, which we're lacking down there.
You have any comments?
We have someone with their hands raised. We have Mr. Moss.
Morning, Matt.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted briefly say that Dan's been working with staff this project. Given its size and number of units, falls under administrative approval for the design. But Dan's been really great in terms of adapting and learning the nuances of the townhouse code. And I think it's pretty exciting to see some two-story townhomes being built or being proposed in this area. We see a lot of three-story homes, so it's nice to have some variety. And I think Dan's really the city jurisdiction here within the alleyways and really just bringing a compelling product. So I think, I just want to say that he's been working really well with us. And this is, I think, an exciting product to have. And hopefully we'll see more of this type of, this type of townhouse project moving forward.
Thanks, Matt.
Director Collier has his hand raised. Director Collier?
Yeah, I do want to call out something with respect to these types of proposals. And that's the economic fits of these types of proposals. When someone owns an actual site and has the ability to do additional units with a particular piece of land, we believe that it actually creates not only opportunity, but actually stability in some of our neighborhoods. This is something that we were exploring as a part of the foreign-based zoning scenario when we were looking at some inside neighborhoods. And Anthony, I see you're on the phone, Mr. Whitfield. We talked a little bit about this prospect in the Fairfax neighborhood. So I just want to highlight that, you know, there's the design conversation, but there's also the economic opportunity scenario that this actually creates when you're able to create income and also create different housing options and types. So I just wanted to go on record highlighting that. We didn't just look through sort of the lens of the physical, but we also looked at the, you know, economic scenario that we believe that projects like this can actually create. But it needs to be an opportunity for everyone everywhere to be able to do this.
Mr. Chairman, we also have Mr. Fluker with his hand raised.
Yes, could, Mr. Reynolds, could you go back to the aerial?
Yes, aerial. Was there an aerial? I don't think there was an aerial with this one.
Just trying to bring in context, guys. That's all. You know me.
It's just the site plan, I'm sorry.
It's, I think it's great, but I just, I don't have context, guys. And it's hard for me to render an opinion solely based on the posted status.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dan, you might want to, can you fill Mr. Fluker in maybe with some more detail on the area?
Yeah, I can share my screen if you want.
Prefer not to do that.
Well, actually, okay, are you familiar with Planet Fitness?
You're muted, Mr. Fluker.
Not for my benefit. You can describe all you want. I just think it's for the benefit of our commission and our board to understand how this fits into the neighborhood. And we don't have a context, that's all. I'm not saying this was a bad project.
Let me see if I can bring up a quick aerial.
I guess the applicant wanted to share a screen, but Maurice says a different way of doing it. I just hope in the future, again, I always preach this, having a complete presentation helps us make an informed decision so we can move on. Not trying to hold you up, sir.
Oh, no, I had sent in a couple of the things. I guess maybe I wasn't clear what to post.
What is the actual address on West 34th?
You can just punch in 2076 West 34th.
Okay, hold on one second. Does that help?
Why don't you zoom in a little bit more for?
Zoom in a little more?
Okay. And then can you go to street view?
So there we have Planet Fitness.
Okay, thank you. That's, I just tried to figure out how it ties into existing fabric.
Yeah, there's my brick two-family that I've refurbished. Doesn't look like that now, though.
Thank you. And there's the parking. Got it. Perfect. Great job.
Sorry about that.
Questions from commission members?
They move approval, Downing. Second.
Fluker.
Motion, second, further discussion. Bearing none, all in favor, signify.
I'm going to call the rolls. Downing. Fluker.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck to you.
Thank you, everyone.
Mandatory referrals. This is an amendment to establish a moratorium on the review issuance of zoning permits, CFOs and other licensing permits applications for small box discount stores. Who's going to be presenting this?
Mr. Chairman, we have Shannon Leonard from our office.
Before we begin, I want to put some context to this. The actual piece of legislation that is being dealt with here is 411, 2019, and was presented by Cleveland City Council. And this is a moratorium for what is referred to as small box discount stores. The moratorium is one piece of the conversation, which is really what the focus is today. However, there's other details with respect to how regulations need be established or could be established, which is something that we're looking into. But I just want to be clear that this conversation today is focused on this prospect of a moratorium that was presented by council. Shannon's going to walk you through some of the details of what we understand is.
Good morning, Shannon Leonard, City Planning. So just to give you a little bit of background, as Director Collier did, small box discount store moratorium is just a temporary solution while we work on a long-term solution to this. And so to give a little context, there's a growing proliferation across the country in urban areas as well as rural areas to kind of over saturate the area with these types of stores, usually knocking out current local mom and pop type grocers, as well as kind of preventing bigger grocers to come into areas. This business model is across the board. There's lots of research and academic journals that support this model that they have. To give you a little bit of context, there are currently 106 small box discount stores in operation in Tire County, 70 of which are in the city of Cleveland proper. So kind of to give you a little bit more context into how they are oversaturating some of our near southeast, near west sides of the city. There are several sources, you know, that's, you know, the money that goes into these stores tends to go back to the corporations that own these stores rather than to the local economy. There's also growing concern around safety with these stores and the residents that are nearby, as well as cleanliness. They also typically only have a small size of workforce. And so the city is really just looking for a temporary solution for now while we work on a longer-term permanent fix. So it's not that we don't, we necessarily do not want these types of stores. We just do not want to over saturate the market. And as we can see that is happening, knowing that there's 70 within city of Cleveland proper already, we are pretty heavily saturated. This also allows for a democratic process once we get legislation in place so that the neighborhood and the council folks, as well as planning and as well as you guys, can weigh in on whether a store that becomes new, new proposals are what the city or the neighborhood wants. Additionally, so that pretty much sums that up. But again, that is a, again, this is just a temporary. Also, any applications for these types of stores that are already currently in process will continue to move through the process. This applies going forward once this becomes in effect. Thank you.
Thank you. I got a couple of questions because I've only read it briefly. And maybe I don't have the whole document. But as I read it, it could pertain or hurt C-stores coming in. So if I have a gas station and I'm redoing my C-store, you know, many of the things are under $10. They supply a lot of the same goods. And so I'm worried how it's written may affect other products that might want to come on to the market that might be a betterment for the city. The other thing is, I didn't see anything that was like a date certain, a moratorium for three months or a moratorium for whatever it would take us to do. And I'm just wondering if a date certain would be good? Because maybe retailers that we would like to see in Cleveland read this and say, well, I can't do business in Cleveland and move on, and we come off the table for them. But if they see a date certain, then maybe we stay on the table until we finish our legislation that would help protect the city.
Mr. Chairman, there's two things I would like to respond to with respect to your comments. I think the date certain comment is obviously, I think, fair. But I do want to, Shannon, if you can just kind of reiterate the definition of what small box is. Because one of the things that I think we need to be clear about is that this is not a witch hunt to weed out certain stores. We reference the fact that this is a concern around the proliferation or oversaturation of these things, which we get. We've heard many, you know, concern, concerns about from a community perspective, but also some of the statistics that Shannon gave are not just, you know, from a place perspective, but it's also, you know, from a economic perspective. And there's a ripple effect as it concerns these things. So Shannon, if you could just kind of hit on the definition of what small box is as it pertains to this legislation, I think that would be helpful.
Let me just interrupt real quickly. Mr. Fluker, did you have your hand raised? You're muted. No, okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Shannon.
Yes, so Shannon Leonard, Chair. So thank you for your comments. So the definition is kind of, you know, obviously everybody's big question. So currently, it's basically a retail store between 3,000 and 15,000 square feet, which dedicates less than 15% of shelf space to fresh foods and produce and sells at a limited retail, a limited assortment of physical goods, products and merchandise directly to the consumer, including food or beverages for off-premise conception, consumption, personal grooming and health products, household goods and other consumer products that generally cost less than $10 or 20% to 40% lower than grocery or drugstores. In addition, there's also some exclusions that are in this moratorium. And so this does not include your retail stores that dedicate less than 5% of shelf space to food sales, sell gasoline or diesel fuel, contain a prescription pharmacy, or dedicate at least 15% of shelf space to fresh foods and produce. So when you reference the C-store, your general convenience stores are, would be excluded from this moratorium in most, any legislation that we put forth going forward. We also don't want to weigh out your mom and pop small grocery store. A lot of those generally less than 3,000 square feet. These small box discount stores, their average is about 10,000 to 12,000 square feet. And they do not sell, you know, the fresh produce or the fresh, the fresh frozen food. It's more like frozen food that's been, you know, right now, but it's been processed in some way, canned goods and such. So I think that this moratorium and any legislation going forward would kind of, would make sure that we were not not being conducive to your mom and pop local stores and your other C-stores and such, or any type of grocery stores that were to come into some of these areas where these discount stores are saturating.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Fluker with his hand raised.
I guess, not trying to incriminate or put anyone on the spot. Can you give a vivid example? I'm reading this and I'm, I think I understand what you're saying. And I'm not suggesting that we're targeting anything, but it's obviously was written for a reason.
Right, and so the moratorium was written by the law department. And so they would like to target the And so they would like to target the stores that are known to follow this business model, that are oversaturating in their neighborhoods. And so obviously, you have a wide range of dollar stores, from whether it's Family Dollar, Dollar General, Dollar Tree, Five Below, Just a Dollar. There's several different types of stores. Those are the corporate names. But again, this applies to all small box discount stores across the city. And again, this wouldn't prevent any stores that are currently in operation. It wouldn't prevent them from maintaining or doing maintenance to their property or any type of renovations, as well as any applications that are currently going through the process. I think it's my understanding that there are maybe one or two applications for new small box discount stores currently working its way through building and housing. Those would be able to continue on as this moratorium would be put into effect after the application process began. And I also do think that if you, if you all would like to add a date certain, that would be, that is a good question.
Can you work with council to talk about what that date certain may be? We don't want to rush the process, but we don't want it to drag on forever.
Understand.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Monroe would like to comment. Mr. Monroe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is John Monroe. I'm with the law firm of Mansor Gavin LPA here in Cleveland. We represent General Corporation. You're opposed to ordinance number 41-2019 as amended, which would place a moratorium on small box discount stores. Dollar General is planning several new investments in the city of Cleveland. In fact, we hope that one will be on your agenda at your next meeting on June 19th. Obviously, this litigation would thwart those investments or future potential investments. Dollar General owns and operates several stores in the city of Cleveland since 2007. Dollar General employs over 150 employees in the city of Cleveland. We are not sure that the cited issues are necessarily valid, but we suggest that this solution is overly broad and unnecessary. It is literally throwing the baby out with the bathwater. I've heard today, for the first time, the saturation argument. And I would suggest that the city of Cleveland has dealt with this issue in the past, whether it was through drugstores in the early 90s or gas station in the 50s. We don't believe that that is a valid legal reason to place a blanket moratorium. First of all, secondly, I'd like to remind this commission that this is a legal use in the city of Cleveland. Retail stores are a legal use. And what is discouraging is when I hear that part of the rationale is so that the city and neighborhood can pick what they want. I think that is a very dangerous precedent. That's why we have permitted uses in the city of Cleveland. That's why we have laws. And if that use is permitted, it should be approved. It is not the whim of what the neighborhood wants, or even what the city wants. It is what is permitted by law. So I would suggest that this is a dangerous precedent. At very least, we would suggest that the ordinance include some reasonable time period, not to exceed three months. If this is really an issue, then the, then the research should have been done before the legislation was introduced. And again, we would ask, we would respectfully request that the Planning Commission give a negative recommendation of this proposed ordinance to Cleveland City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Forrest, you got anyone else? You're on mute.
I'm sorry, Councilman Slife and Mr. Collier as well, Director Collier.
Thank you. And being a newer member of Cleveland City Council, I actually haven't been too engaged with this issue on the council side. However, I guess the luxury of doing these meetings remote is that I'm in front of my computer and I can pull up an old paper that I did within graduate school. I actually, at one point, plotted in 2013 the location of stores of this nature across the city. And then through some kind of rudimentary GIS work, tried to calculate the population that lived within the market area of that specific store under the theory that you're not going to drive across town if there's a store a quarter mile away selling the same products or is the same brand. And what I found at that time was very much a clustering of stores in areas that would have a very low exclusive market, under 3,000 people, and also a clustering of stores near, you know, kind of smaller, non-corporate mom-and-pop stores. You know, I appreciate that there's, you know, any people are able to, you know, research and move towards opening a retail outlet in the city of Cleveland. However, I also think that this commission has an obligation to think through, you know, future uses. And what I see, the proliferation of stores and neighborhoods where population continues to decline is a recipe for vacancy and blight if trends were to continue. And that's why I think that this moratorium could give us the ability to begin to think through, you know, how this commission in the city of Cleveland is working to ensure that we're not perpetuating a problematic issues across the city. So that's just a comment that I have, and I'm eager to get more involved in this with Councilman Griffin.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Collier?
Yes, I just want to reiterate some of what Mr. Slife said. I think that this is really carefully analyzing this. One comment that the gentleman made early that I found really interesting was he indicated, and he can repeat himself again, because I would like to be clear, that it's not about, shouldn't be up to the community and residents. That is, that is a comment that, you know, is concerning to me. And we're here as legislators and administrators to evaluate laws and make laws that benefit, you know, the people and our residents of our city and our community. And I find it hard to digest that commentary. And I do want to also just state the fact that, yes, this is a moratorium. Yes, it's a certain, it needs to be a certain amount of time. I agree with that. But also, with respect to us doing the analysis and digging in and giving this the type of attention and rigor that it deserves, it's not a bad thing. You indicated it in your comments that the research should have been done already before this has been applied. I think that's unfair. And I do want to just go on record saying that, to Mr. Slife's point, we, working with council and others, intend to do this analysis and do things in a manner that actually makes sense. So I think you should be actually, I'm not going to use the term excited, but understand and appreciate the fact that we want to look at this carefully. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Freddie. Shannon, did you want to say anything?
Sure, I, again, I appreciate Director Collier's comments. I would just say, I just parroted what Ms. Leonard said. She said, you know, specifically said down was to let what the city and neighborhood wants. And again, the problem is, that's what permitted uses are for. If you don't want to permit certain retail uses in this area, then legislate that and adopt that part of the law. The problem comes when you say, "We're going to identify this spectrum of retail uses" and say, "No, we're not going to allow any of them, not now, not for forever, right now, as the legislation is written." I think that's a problem. And, you know, if there's future looks at what's, what type of retail is allowed in a particular area, that's appropriate. But I just think a moratorium without a end date to single out this segment of the retail world at this time is not a smart investment. You know, I can't say that if Dollar General, "Okay, fine, we'll go somewhere else." And that's investment lost, and I think that's a problem for the city.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Leonard would like to comment again.
Yes, go ahead.
You're muted, Shannon.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to respond. So there has been quite a bit of research and discussions within the various departments that are affected by this legislation. And to, to his point, there has been mapping that has been done. And I apologize that we do not have the map for you today. But you will notice, as I had stated before, that within Cairo County, there are 106 of these types of stores, 70 of which are within the city of Cleveland proper, out of 59 municipalities. Everything that we do here in city planning has to do with, and has these types of review boards to determine across the board what our zoning code permits, yes, or does not permit, but allows the community to weigh in, allows different design review boards and different boards to weigh in, as well as the neighborhood to weigh in. So to think that this legislation or this temporary moratorium is in any way just to prohibit some sector of retail, for the moment, it's a temporary solution. Maybe you could do a six-month, nine-month moratorium date certain to allow the city to get into the proper, the proper legislation in place. Because there, regardless of what the gentleman has stated, there is oversaturation, and often, it is in our lower-income and people of color neighborhoods within the city of Cleveland. There's definitely an over-concentration in the near east side, east side, and southeast sides of the city. And again, I apologize that I do not have the map. By all means, you can all look on Google and look at all the different types of stores, these types of stores, and see it plain and clear. So again, this is just a moratorium. This is a temporary solution. I do agree that you should put a date certain on it that we could pass to council. But again, this is temporary until we get a permanent solution and fixed. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Fluker.
Yes. Guys, we're talking about social equity here, and no one stated it. The reality of it is, COVID has exposed a lot. And in the neighborhoods, populations who are most at risk, who are African-American, that's what we're talking about. Because I live in Cleveland, and I could drive down the street, and I'd drive by within a quarter-mile radius, there's $2 or $3 stores. So we're talking about quality of life issues here. We're talking about access and opportunity. So we need to pause and think about it, because it's very important. You know, let's take off our business hats and talk about how we heal this country. Because that's what we're talking about. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we also have Mr. Collier. Did you have your hand raised again?
I'm sorry, I just didn't take it down. I apologize.
Was it Mr. Monroe? Okay, then.
Can I add one thing, Murray? This is also, as Commissioner Fluker stated, it is an equity issue in the fact that the dollar stores, they do, they do seem to be cheaper. But within these neighborhoods, price per ounce, they come out to be more expensive. So again, just reiterating Mr. Fluker's statements, this is not only an economic issue, but this is also for local business, as well as the residents, but also a health issue. And the access to fresh foods is incredibly important. And so that's one of the, some of the driving forces that we're behind going into this moratorium and as well as to look at legislation to make sure that these are not oversaturating our neighborhoods. Thank you.
I kind of think it's really important to put a date certain. I don't think nine to 12 months is a good date certain. I think it needs to be less than that. I think it needs to be three to six months. I think we need to put our nose down to the grindstone for a number of reasons. Any small box discount store that comes in may look at and say, "Okay, with the new legislation, these are how we stock the stores." So logistically, they're prepared to come into Cleveland. And then it becomes more equitable with Mr. Fluker's kind of. So I think it would be great, and I'm not sure exactly how we'd do it Friday, but to suggest at least a date certain.
Mr. Chairman, this is Diane Downing. I'd like to suggest November 1st as the date certain.
November 1st, you said?
Yes.
My dad's birthday. Are you making a motion to approve it?
Yes, I will move approval with, for the moratorium to extend to November 1st, 2020.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Stomi.
Second, Paul.
Motion second, further discussion.
Just to clarify, this, this is solely related, this motion solely related to the date or related to the entirety of the piece with the date change?
The entirety of the piece, but adding a date certain. So at that point, the moratorium would be off.
That was my intent, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bozek?
Bowen?
Downing?
Yes.
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 Slife? Yes.
Great job, guys. Okay, ordinance number 461-2020, authorizing the Director of Capital Projects and the Director of City Planning to establish a temporary program for the use of private parking lots, streets, and other public right-of-ways, including on-street parking areas, parklets, and outdoor restaurants. Please look for this.
Yes, how are you? This is Director Collier. I'm going to be discussing this piece. Can you see my screen, please?
Director Collier, this is Councilman Slife. This piece was passed under suspension by City Council on Wednesday. Is everyone aware of that?
It's our understanding that this was yesterday. But even if it was passed under suspension, you do understand that this piece still has to be mandatory, we do refer to the Planning Commission.
Okay, that, I thank you for that clarification.
Yes. Typically, what happens if a piece is passed and is not heard by Planning Commission, that piece could become void at passage. I just want to be clear about that. However, we are in a very precarious situation with COVID-19. Thank you. Can you all see my screen?
No, Director Collier, we do not see it yet.
Okay, hold on, please.
It's starting now.
All right. Let me know when you can see it.
We can see it now.
Okay, this piece of legislation basically authorizes the Director of Capital Projects and the Director of City Planning to establish rules and regulations permitting temporary expansion areas of outdoor patios. This is a very important piece of legislation, particularly during this time of COVID-19. One of the mandates by the World Health Organization and the governor with respect to social distancing would require that restaurants have the space and capacity to be able to honor that particular mandate. to be able to honor that particular mandate. Cities around the country are starting to basically look at how.
Excuse me, excuse me, we cannot see the screen. We're just getting a blank screen. If you have a window in front of the browser, we won't be able to see it. Sorry to interrupt.
It's okay.
There we go. Now I can see it again. Oh, now it wasn't.
Hold on.
Sorry to interrupt.
Some worries. Who's the football player in the picture behind you? Football player, there's no football player.
Oh, that was my father.
Can you see? Can you see it now? No, it's a blank screen.
All right, it should come up more clearly.
It's coming up now. Okay, you're going to want to maximize that. And then, there you go. Now we can see it.
Okay, everyone can see now?
Yes, sir. You might want to switch to slide mode. There you go, perfect.
Yep. Okay, so with respect to the capacity that's needed for restaurants throughout the city, I'm going to just kind of share with you the analysis that we've been doing internally based on the legislation that allows us, for us to pursue this. We've been working through Chief Brown in Operations to identify districts within the city that can actually accommodate the expansion of their outdoor patio space. We've developed several typologies that allow for us to measure what we think is feasible and what could be done in specific geographies of the city. I also want to outline the fact that we do have our existing patio regulations that allow for businesses to expand in front of their facility within a right-of-way. And I also want to go on record stating that one of the things you're going to see is the parklet concept, which is something that we've put forth to the Planning Commission several years ago, as far back as 2015. Given current circumstances, this situation actually is ideal for that type of scenario. And I'm going to walk you through a couple of the districts and what our approach is to this point. We are going to be working closely with City Council and CDCs. The regulations are being drafted right now as we speak. But I think this is one piece that everyone, Council, the administration, others, are looking to implement, but implement the right way. And I just want to emphasize that. And you'll see here that this is not a one-size-fits-all scenario with respect to the application of this. So there is some details that we have to. So what we're looking at is four different typology areas that we're focused on. One, which are parklets, which are modular protected patios and an on-street parking space. We're also looking at parking lot common areas where we're looking to do what's called eating plazas that are physically distanced. We also are looking at the prospect of primary streets, maybe take on special event-style closures for some of those streets, but we're analyzing that very closely. And then the secondary streets are where we would do full closures at all hours. The interesting thing is that Cleveland has some pretty good examples of, of this already, and I'll talk about what a couple of those are. So our existing patio regulations allow for any businesses to add patio space to the front of their facilities in the actual public sidewalk right-of-way. For the purposes of today's conversation, we're talking about areas beyond that. We began to look at some of the key districts in our city that we know have clusters of businesses. And we started to look at areas where we, you know, have some precedent, also where we want to kind of pilot, and I just use that term loosely, some key areas to actually focus on. This is really important for us. There are certain areas in the city where we are focused on. This, and looking at where we have clusters of dining establishments, where there is precedent for some of these interventions, and also areas that are adjacent to public assets and actually do not interrupt public transit. One of those areas that we began to look at was the area around Huron and Prospect. And looking at the fact that there's a cluster of businesses that exist in that area, you can see the red P on the map, which identifies businesses with existing outdoor patio permits. But when you look at the options here, things that we have identified, and this would be considered a secondary street with Huron, is looking at identifying a zone in the right-of-way where we could actually establish tables and chairs, but also allow for traffic to be able to traverse the area, particularly as it relates to EMS and also safety forces being able to get in and out of the space. Just from a conceptual standpoint, this just gives you an example of what the potential could be in an area like this with respect to that have to be organized in a way that literally protects the actual pedestrians and patrons from the actual traffic in the road right-of-way. The other piece that is very important is the installation of sanitizing stations with spaces to make sure that people have the opportunity to take responsibility to make sure that they're adhering to safety practices. This also looks at an expanded area along Huron where you see City Tap, Winking Lizard, Buffalo Wild Wings, and really starting to look at the opportunity for parklets in that green band here. So this is an illustration that shows, obviously, businesses that have existing outdoor patio areas in the actual sidewalk right-of-way. The concept here would be to literally go out into the parking spaces that are in front of the businesses and utilize that for pedestrian and patron type of access. Also, potentially keeping specific parking spaces along the actual corridor. We looked at for the prospect of parklets is the Larchmere area. So you can see here, along Larchmere, you have where the green areas exist, opportunities where you have parking lanes on either side of the street, where businesses can actually expand into the right-of-way and create that additional space for patrons to either dine in or have the ability to line up in an area that gives you the proper spacing gaps needed in order to respect social distancing. Now, one of the key opportunities for closures is presented in Hingeton. There are a couple of really good opportunities here due to the fact that you have a very short street between Detroit Avenue and Church Avenue, and you have a saturation of businesses in that corridor. When you start to look at the opportunity here, you can almost think of it like a food court in a mall, where you go to various countertops, and then you have this common area that people can actually sit down and dine in with the proper social distancing. When you look at this from an aerial perspective, this is a very intimate street. It really creates a great opportunity to provide the proper barriers. And then you can see the tables being spaced six feet apart, and also the ADA accessibility going from the dining area to the curb. And also, again, making sure that there's proper sanitizing stations present as well. Another area that is a key focus is the opportunity that Market Avenue presents, which is a similar scenario, where you can actually close a street and really leverage the businesses that are in a tight geography, making sure that tables and chairs are spaced appropriately, but also taking advantage of the existing plaza that's there already. And many of the businesses here, as you can see in the red, with the red P, already have the outdoor patio permit. So the idea would be to set up tables and chairs along the corridor. You would also have your outdoor patio area, your sanitizing stations, and also perhaps expand out, depending on the volume of people that would come to a specific district, and being able to leverage all of your, your space in that particular area. Now, this was a great test case last summer when Market Street was closed. Folks from Ohio City, you know, worked hard to, with the city, to close the street, and it was a pretty successful endeavor. We want to highlight, and we're still researching this, is West 25th Street. West 25th Street is bustling with activity under normal circumstances. And one of the things that we wanted to focus on, particularly with businesses that are on main streets, is that pickup and drop-off delivery is critical for businesses at this time. The touch-and-go scenario is really important. So one of the things that we're examining, and we have to make sure that we understand the legality of this, and the Law Department is working with us to determine if, in fact, we can utilize parking spaces or parking lots, particularly ones like this one that City. Know the legality to this, because I want to go on record saying that. But we're exploring this possibility of the outdoor eating plaza. What's interesting about West 25th in this section between Market Avenue and Bridge Avenue is that all of these businesses have rear entrances and exits. Some have patio spaces on the side of them already. For example, Mitchell's Ice Cream, and we know the volume of customers that Mitchell's would typically get. But that rear opportunity creates the potential to expand into parking spaces if we are legally able to do that. So this would be somewhat of a scenario that could happen if businesses were to take up parking spaces to the rear of their buildings. Now, given COVID-19, obviously vehicular travel has decreased. You see in cities like Los Angeles that their issues with smog have dissipated as a result of this. So there's some really interesting indicators that's coming out of COVID-19 that may be able to help us rethink our streets in the future beyond COVID. So I want you guys to keep in mind. The other component along 25th Street, and for those of you who frequent 25th Street, you already know that on many of the driving nights, like the Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, you're looking at one lane coming and going because so many cars are parked on either side of the street. So in a scenario like this, where you could potentially do parklets, you'd literally just be taking up those parking spaces along the corridor, and you still have your through traffic and your safety vehicles that can actually traverse West 25th Street. The last example I want to highlight is one that is a huge opportunity with respect to Shaker Square. Shaker Square obviously has four quadrants, each with businesses of the four quadrants. You can see that you have the Shaker Boulevard street here, and then you also have the Blue Green Waterfront Line that comes through. But when you look at these quadrants, each of these quadrants are parked. So the idea would be to first grab it toward the low-hanging fruit, which is identifying the actual parking spaces and utilizing those as expansion areas. But also, really thinking about how you would actually do your social distancing, and you would also make sure that you're able to maintain the traffic that comes through Shaker Square. Also looks at the potential to capture the green space that already exists in Shaker Square and look at utilizing those green spaces as your sort of plaza, sort of public eating areas that can actually services, service multiple quadrants in Shaker. And then, of course, we all know that Shaker Square is often closed off typically under typical circumstances for the actual market. So looking at the prospect of closing the square off in its entirety to service as a expansion area for special events and when you have large volumes of people. A couple of more things that I want to highlight that is very important. We have to continue to promote to the public their responsibility in making sure that we curb the spread of coronavirus. So these banners are something that we're looking at to put over the barricades, and also encouraging people to wear face masks. And these are things that we want to continue to work through with Council and business owners in your districts that are identified here to make sure that we're not just coming up with a solution, but we're coming up with the right solutions, because it's not a one-size-fits-all for each of the districts. And we're also looking at doing a online potentially for businesses to be able to go on and apply. We're putting out, we're going to be working on a application that's going to be able to be accessed in order to apply for this. And then the last thing I want to highlight is the fact that we're talking about dining today, but there's other things that we're going to start to look at, given the fact that this is a situation that we may be in for some time. So the critical part for, for us right now is, you know, June 3rd, the legislation was introduced and passed, whatever. And then June 5th, the City Planning Commission hearing, which is occurring right now. By next week, we want to begin to finalize our rules and regulations, and then have our actual application form established and really start to begin engagement process with businesses in the various districts. So that's just an overview of where we're at. We're really grateful that the legislation was introduced and we're moving on this, because this is something that could be a benefit to businesses. We do also acknowledge the events that have taken place, and we have to discuss the state of some of those, those businesses in those districts, given what has taken place and what, what's going on right now. But this is kind of where we are. And Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to Mr., forgive my interruptions with my dog.
Mr. Chairman, we, we had Mr. Councilman Slife wishing to make a comment, although he stepped up. There he is.
I was putting milk in my tea, I'm sorry. I do know that Councilman Zone is still on it, and if Councilman Zone would like, he's been so involved in this that before I speak, maybe he'd like the opportunity. Would you, would you like that, Councilman Zone? I could see if you just thumbs up.
Thank you. I appreciate if the Director and the Commission would give me an opportunity. First of all, I appreciate how much work has gone into planning this. Our planning department has done amazing work. A lot of community development specialists embedded in our community development network have been working on this as well. We're ready to go in Ward 15. We mapped out our sections. I didn't see in the presentation any examples used from Ward 15. It was only Ward 3 in downtown and, and Larchmere. And I was curious as to when we can start the expectation of implementation.
Yes, I'm sorry, I lost you guys for a moment. I had to log back on here. So a couple of things. The areas that were highlighted in there are some kind of low-hanging fruit examples that we wanted to utilize. With respect to examples, we probably could have used every one of the 11 districts that we've had highlighted in the presentation. Those were just lifted up as being some key examples of the typologies that we want to demonstrate with respect to, we would measure any proposal that we get against. With respect to implementation, one of the things that I put on the last slide With respect to implementation, one of the things that I put on the last slide is sort of what that approach to implementation is with respect to the dates that I provided. I think the most important thing is finalizing the regulations and then the application itself. And I think working with council members, I think is going to be very important with respect to engaging businesses to kind of understand sort of how this program is going to roll out.
Thank you, Director. Just a brief comment, Mr. Chairman, then, and I'll wrap up. Some suggestions. I think we need to loosen the site plan requirements to require a general site plan. When you require business owners to provide a detailed, to-scale site plan, that means many business owners will need to hire an architect in order to put a handful of tables together. What turns out to be a $200 permit now turns into a $1,200 permit because they have to pay their architect to provide that. We should also provide a temporary outdoor restaurant that is three feet deep or less on sidewalks and do not require pedestrian diverters. This will make it easier for businesses to put up bistro types of tables. So you have your typical sidewalk, six-foot wide sidewalk. We should be allowing coffee shops and restaurants to put tables contiguous to their structure next to it, still clearly allowing four feet. We can't be as rigid to say, oh, no, if it's not six feet, you know, the world's going to end. We need to make it viable so these businesses can still open up. I think we should also eliminate requirements that the applications provided in the various exhibits, photos of existing sidewalk obstruction. This is something that City Planning should be able to do and investigate with site visits, Google street views, you know, asking applicants to send in photos of areas that, you know, that creates another barrier to the application. So I really hope that the planning department is running this and not mocap. Mocap should really evaluate if all these requirements are even really necessary. I think that I don't want, particularly dealing with this pandemic, we need to be nimble. City of Cincinnati regulated this, put it in play within six days. We can do it as well here in Cleveland, and I stand ready to do my part in Ward 15. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Councilman Slyf.
Mr. Chairman, we have Annie Pease has raised her hand, like to comment.
Director Collier, thank you so much for the presentation. This is a really helpful overview. I'm curious if there's consideration for whether, is the permitting process being considered? Would it be businesses only who would apply? Or would there be broader consideration for community groups to apply? And I'm also wondering if there were costs associated with the permitting and what's being considered there.
So just at this point, it would be businesses at this point. Again, making sure that we start in a place, you know, that we can make sure that we can manage the prospect of this. I want to respond, Annie, I'm going to respond to your second question, but I want to respond to something that Councilman Zone had indicated. One of the things about rigidity, you know, the goal here is about adaptability, right? And making sure that we're able to adapt, but do it in a responsible way. You know, when you talk about Cincinnati and when they did it with Over the Rhine, you know, it was just one area of the city. So they were kind of learning as they go, per se, you know. And again, with us, we took a more comprehensive approach because we not only see where we are with COVID-19, when we're looking at some of these areas, it may be an indicator of how we can rethink some of our actual streets. So we want to take advantage of that. Just with respect to the, one comment that was made just about the application and submission requirements and things of that nature and a site plan. You know, so the reason why we put together the typologies was to provide that guidance. And so we can have something when a business comes in and say, hey, here's what we want to do. And we need to be able to take that and measure it against something that we can actually support and manage. So you saw the Jersey barriers in the illustrations. Those are things that we can actually supply for businesses. Contemplating the prospect of not having fees for expansion. But again, we're going back and forth because it's designed to help support businesses. So as we examine this, you know, we believe that we're going to come up with the right solution. And I will say this, we do not know how long it's going to be before there's a cure for COVID. And part of what we have to do with what we're learning right now during this time is set ourselves up for if we have to go back into quarantine mode fully or we have to adjust, we have things in place that we know actually makes sense. Now, you all know the administration and how we operate. We believe in being progressive, but we first believe in being responsible. And that will never change as long as this administration is in office. So we want to make sure that we put ourselves in the best position to be able to execute this and hopefully do it without incident or without issue. We're working very hard on this. Chief Brown has been very dedicated, a team of internal folks that are devoted to this. And we see and believe that it's an important thing to help our businesses. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Slyf. Sorry, I should have went back to you after Councilman Zone.
No worries. I echo much of what Councilman Zone has said, and I, you know, I supported this legislation. This isn't, I don't want this to be a specific thing towards any business because that's how our current zoning code is set up, and I think that that's problematic. But when we start talking about removing parking lots en masse, I want us just all remember that there are some in our community who are, have mobility issues and, you know, kind of rely on being able to arrive to destinations easily. And I want to make sure that we're not unintentionally preventing all people from being able to access our businesses as we're trying to help them reopen. So I don't have an easy solution for that. I think we all know it. I just want to underscore it and know that it's something that we need to be focused on as we are actually implementing this out. So it's just a comment for the good of the order.
Appreciate that. If I may respond really quick, because I want to make sure that we're clear, because I know that there's quite a bit of people on the phone or maybe media on the phone. The illustrations that you see in what we're examining, these are areas that, in the slide deck show, where we know that the potential for larger volumes of people could happen during these warmer months. One example to Annie's point, and I want to kind of, I think I missed her second point. I want to reiterate the fact that in areas, for example, of like Uptown. Uptown was designed, in a way, that focused on creating public space. Often, we're looking within, with respect to this situation, areas that typically don't provide the adequate public space by COVID-19 commands. So when you look at the Uptown District, for example, and you see how the streets are designed with the large plazas, the pedestrian walkways, those are already outfitted to be able to have the ability to absorb the capacity needed to respect social business. This is why street design, creating places, is so important in our communities. So here we are in this situation, trying to figure out where it makes sense for these existing districts that are very dense and urban in nature. So that's the sort of lead-in for why we are kind of focusing on some of the districts that we're focusing on. And I just want to emphasize, keep in mind that all businesses in the city of Cleveland can apply for a patio permit. When you're talking about a situation like this that we're in, we're talking about where the potential exists for clusters of people to congregate that you have to manage. And this is why these areas were identified. So I will say that we are working through this, and we're doing it responsibly and thoughtfully. We have several city departments engaged in this activity. So just understand that we want to make sure that we do this, do this the right way. It is not foreign to us. I just want to be clear to that on that point as well.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one else with hands raised.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval. Diane Downing.
Can I comment real quick? I didn't have my hand raised. I forgot to take it down. Charlie Hawthorne with Tremont West, Housing Economic Development Director. I also represent as co-chair the citywide economic development professionals throughout the city. We've actually presented 10 CDCs that actually presented options for parking lot streets and right-of-ways that we would like to see as part of any program. We've great, we, we want this yesterday, right? Our businesses are asking for this yesterday. They are, they're struggling right now. They're looking for, they're looking at 50% or less capacity in their current facilities. Some people are not able to open period because of the small size of their establishments. So this is a critical element that we see as a, another COVID response from our perspective. We would like to see that the permit process be as simple as possible, even to the level of a form-based code almost to a certain degree, where you just follow guidelines or we are even ready as economic development professionals who are on the ground to help, to help set, help businesses set these areas up in a way that is safe for everyone and meets the set, whatever set guidelines that we come up with. Like I said, it just needs to be streamlined, going through the existing permit process with the volume that we're expecting from all the, at least the 10 CDCs and probably more. That it will overburden the current system to put all those, to put that number of applications through at the same time. So those are things that we would like for everybody to take in consideration as you move forward. I don't know, I don't know. Corey's on the line. I think he wanted to speak more specifically to Tremont.
Okay, you covered it well. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. So as I said, I have businesses contacting me in Tremont about, hey, let's do this. Let's do it now. And I tell them it's coming and hopefully soon. But like I said, we're entirely in support of it, and we're, can't wait to engage with you guys to move this forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one else with hands raised.
I think Diane made the motion correct.
I did. I'll say.
Motion second. Further discussion? Call the roll, Michael.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
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 Slyf.
Yes.
Thank you. Administrative approvals, please take a look and I take the most of them.
Mr. Chair, on behalf of Councilman McCormick, I'd like to ask that ordinance 369-2020 be tabled. This is related to the Serial Food Processors property on Merwin Avenue. This legislation was introduced in March. Subsequent to that, it appears that this business has ceased operations. So Councilman McCormick would like to hold off on this to get more information and take their next steps prior to giving Port Control the option to exercise and option to lease.
Okay, so this is ordinance number 369-2020?
Correct.
And so that's number 11 on the administrative approvals. There's a desire to table that piece.
Could I make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, Michael has his hand raised. I'm not sure.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just, just so you know, this, the administrative approvals have already been signed by Director Collier. I think the appropriate place to stop the legislation would be when it gets to the appropriate council committee hearing.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any, any doesn't have any impact whatsoever. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, gotcha. Well, it'll be noted in the meeting minutes. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Fluker.
I move to approve the administrative slate as presented.
Second slide.
Motion second. Further discussion? Call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slyf.
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to design review. So far, West Design Review, Unnumbered Palazzo Restaurant Parking Lot Expansion. Who's here for this one?
Mr. Chairman, we have Catherine Hallamack. Hope I got that last name right.
Close enough. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Hi, Catherine. Can I, if you raise your right hand, I'm going to have to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me here. And I appreciate all the work that you guys have been doing through this whole meeting. Lots of good development happening, and this is part of that development. So what I'm going to talk to you today about, Maurice, if you can switch to the next slide, please.
There you go.
Thank you. What I'm going to talk to you today about is a parking lot expansion for a new business in the West Town neighborhood. So right there in the center of your screen is a red square. That parcel there is going to have seven new parking spaces, added to the existing parking lot of the Palazzo Restaurant, which is where the little dot is showing there. And this helps to expand that lot, but also expand the opportunities for safe valet for that facility. If you want to go to the next slide, please.
Chairman, here for commission members, that red box that you saw was the, there was an old apartment building that was falling down, and we gave approval to the Mama Shed not that long ago.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that clarification. And you can see that is also in the district of West Town. West Town is right now going through a transit-oriented design study that was partially funded by Nowaka. And Chad Dasher, I think, is still on the call and can answer any questions in specific about that project, but that is with Detroit Shoreway and West Town. And they're looking at the entire neighborhood and have brought that to attention of the local design review committee. If you want to go to the next slide then, please. So as Mr. Bowen mentioned, this was a vacant building that was razed. And this parking area is now a grassy lot, and you can see that off to the far right. You can see its proximity to the GCRTA. And again, as I mentioned, West Town and Detroit Shoreway are studying this area as a transit-oriented design. And the existing restaurant, as we discussed with the local design review committee, does not have a lot of existing parking to the facility itself. If you want to go to the next slide, we can take a look at that. So they do have some, about, about nine spaces for the restaurant, which is obviously not adequate for the restaurant. However, there are parking spaces around there in the neighborhood that are available if they can get out of their car safely, and not on Detroit Avenue, but actually in the parking lot, to get out of their car safely and valet when they need to. And what this, what this plan will actually do is allow that to do that. And Maurice, if I can have you go to the next slide. So you can see that the bottom, the top photograph is the transportation-oriented design area, study area in orange. And this is pretty much smack dab in the middle of that. And that planning study is underway right now. We did have, City Architecture is the design firm that is leading that charge for West Town and Detroit Shoreway and Nowaka. And they are, I'm not sure, but Chad can probably discuss what stages they are in on that planning study if you have any questions. And then on the bottom, you can see the architectural building behind the blue star there. That's the existing restaurant that we're trying to service with this new parking lot expansion. Maurice, can you go to the second, next slide? Thank you. So this is a layout. The brown is the existing building in the restaurant. The light gray is the existing parking lot. And then to the left, well, right, left, it depends on where you're looking at. But the darker area shown in red outline, that's the new parking lot expansion area. So it does provide seven additional parking spaces. It also provides a little more room at the front entrance of where people enter the parking lot on Detroit Avenue for there to be cars, to be having people come out of their cars and use as valet. So there's an awning to that building right So there's an awning to that building right there at the entrance where you see the one-way entrance into the parking lot. So there's an awning that the restaurant owners can stand there and, and help people get out of their cars. Again, this is, this is not enough parking spaces for the restaurant to be, you know, to have a parking space for every single restaurant goer, but it does provide some safety improvements to the lot as well as additional capacity when the lighter times of the year. And then additionally, this, this project is funded by the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District through their green infrastructure grant program. And the brown area that you see off to the right, next to the new parking spaces, is actually a bioretention cell. The bioretention cell is planted heavily with perennials and it also has trees in, in the front of it. The bioretention cell provides stormwater management for the new pavement as well as old pavement to the ten-year design storm. So that's a lot, actually. And this is in the combined sewer area of the sewer district. Next slide, please. So this is a before on the, on the bottom. So this is the existing picture and then a proposed picture of the landscaping and what it would look like. Again, the bioretention cell is depressed and it holds water for a temporary amount of time until it can drain into the soils. We do have sandy soils in this area. So we are blessed in Cleveland to have some of those sandy soils in the area and, which helps with stormwater infiltration and reduces combined sewer overflows to our lakes and rivers. This, we did go before the local design review committee and they did request that the plant material color be red rather than yellow in tone. So we did change our plant palette to that. And then we, they also requested that the trees be a taller tree, a sycamore or an oak. The oaks do not do well in, with stormwater inundation, especially with car pollutants. So we did pick the sycamore and we did push those outside of the, the bioretention cell so that they will be healthy and strong. Next slide, please. And this is showing the different plant palette. We do have still one yellow color in there. It does provide a little bit of interest towards the, the building itself. One thing I do want to mention, Maurice, if you can go two slides back to the plan. Thank you. I did want to mention that we do have on-street lighting and building lighting already. For, so we did not feel that an additional light would be needed to light this seven-car additional parking lot. And the parking lot bioretention cell will be managed and maintained with, by West Town. And West Town will be, it has been working with the property owner to have a fenced-in enclosure for his existing dumpster and grease trap, which is shown in the lower portion of the parking lot currently. And then also the, the restaurant owner will be putting in a decorative ornamental fence around the parking lot to match his existing ornamental fence that is along Detroit Avenue. As, and that was two things that were requested by the local design review committee as well. And with that, Maurice, if you can go to the last slide. Thank you. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you do have.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Davenport with his hand raised?
Thanks Maurice. Mr. Chairman, Adam Davenport, staff planner for the planning commission. And then also I wanted to relay some thoughts from the Far West Design Review Committee and give some context, some context or comments that they had for the project itself. The design itself was approved by the committee with the comments that Catherine and our whole design group got back to the committee with on some amendments. But they did have a lot of questions regarding the overall use of the lot as a new expanded park, parking lot for the Plaza Restaurant. You could see in the context slides from the beginning, and I'm sure most of you remember what was there before, the, the apartment building that was directly across from the rapid station. So there were many thoughts surrounding transit-oriented development in that context, taking away the apartment building, putting in an expanded parking lot for only seven spaces and for mostly valet, which according to the restaurant, it, those valet cars are distributed through the neighborhood and parked elsewhere. So the committee asked a lot of questions about that, a lot of questions about a possible shared service agreement, if you will, with, with R T A or with the Cadell Rec Center situated very closely nearby as well that you could see in the, in the first slide, if you want to flip back to that. The, there were just a lot of concerns about the land use itself as expanding the parking lot. So I wanted to give, I want to relay those comments and kind of set that stage.
Mr. Chairman, we have Councilman Zone would like to make a comment. And then we also have Mr. Fluker.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I, for the record, this particular parcel is not in my ward, but I represent the immediate, the entire neighborhood to the north of this parcel, the immediate neighborhood to the east of this parcel and the majority of the residential neighborhood to the west of this parcel. It was a sad day in the city of Cleveland when we allowed the de-landmarking of one structure that was a perfect example of transit-oriented weighted development. This commission has that stain. You were the one who approved the de-landmarking. That was something that we should never do in the future. I think we need policies to make sure that legislatively, we can't, just like we shouldn't do spot zoning, that we do spot removal of landmark, landmark structure. I'm disappointed that that structure is down. Now we need to deal with and make it the best environment it can be. I'm disappointed that we were at this point. I'm not necessarily opposed of this parking lot. It would be nice if we had something that better defined the corner. Plantings are nice. They look really nice, Catherine, in your illustrations, but it does nothing to hug and protect that corner. Decorative aluminum fencing is nice, but it really does nothing to respect and hug that corner. People will cut through this lot. There is, this is a very dense residential neighborhood. I'm glad that you're substituting the trees and going to plant hardy sycamore trees because all you need to do is drive up West Boulevard. They're all London Plains and sycamores and that's consistent with, what's on that street. I would like to see something, maybe a, a, a brick structure-built wall that, that hugs that corner, that defines that. The other thing is I want to remind this commission that we, the city of Cleveland demolished that structure and spent over a hundred thousand dollars and we did it under the guise of walking safe routes to school.
Am I muted or not?
Yeah. Somebody's, no, no. Somebody's phone is not muted.
Yeah, it was Mr. Dasher. Go ahead. Continue.
So we, we demolished and spent over a hundred thousand dollars to take down a building that the taxpayers of the city of Cleveland paid for. And then the lot was cleared and the title was cleared through the border revision and it was sent over to West Town Development Corporation. I'm, I'm bitter that we did that and it's not good public policy and I wanted to put those comments on the record.
Mr. Chairman, I know that Mr. Fluker, I believe, has to leave and I think he had a comment.
No, I, I'm just, I just need to go on the record that I have to leave for board. Thank you. And I follow Mr. Fluker.
We have, Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Dasher.
Yes, Mr. Dasher.
Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, this is, this is my ward. I'm at Chad Dasher's desk at West Town Community Development Corporation. I'm fully in support of this. That building that was there, I understand the consternation, the angst and the wailing of, of what happened. However, that building was unsafe. It needed to come down. There was no buyer. They couldn't find the owner and in the fire department, everybody said the building had to go. So West Town owns the parcel. This restaurant needs parking, only has seven spaces. This is a well-thought-out plan. I mean, it looks beautiful. This shouldn't be delayed. I understand people are trying to fight the battle that was fought a year ago. And I would say that we should move forward. This will provide just seven spaces with the bioswirl. The way it is now currently, there's a lot of cars that park there and stuff. So this will be, this will be nice and an expedition in the neighborhood to serve the restaurant. And you know, that's the, the R T A stations in my ward, the area west of this is in my ward, the area south of this and north of this is my ward. I know if Westbrook's Matt is around here, but, but this is my ward. Thank you.
We have no other hands raised at this point unless Mr. Davenport, did you want to make another comment? Your hand is still raised, Mr. Davenport?
Oh, sorry. I can, no, I just had one more contextual comment about that the, the, I don't know if I mentioned it before, but the valet, this is, I think Catherine explained it a bit, but the valet cars are just to be moved elsewhere in the neighborhood. That was according to the design review committee presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Members?
This is Slife. I would move approval, the contingent on the recommendations put forth by the design committee and adding the, exploring the possibility of wrapping the corner and, you know, with some sort of decorative item as, you know, Councilman Zone had suggested, just adding that as, as something to research.
You know, and I like that comment a lot. I think if we did something like, something of substance, a new wall, especially because the street's so wide there, it gives someone a place to pause and relax that might not be as mobile as other people. It does pronounce that edge there much better. So I think that's great to look into. I agree with you. So we have a motion?
I'll second Downing.
Motion in a second. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment? There's no budget for that. This is a grant. So if you require that new wall, that'll kill the project because this is a grant from the sewer district. So there's no monies to do anything additional, just so you're aware.
Yeah, I, I think it's to look at it and, and all the.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion second. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slife. Yes.
Question carries. Good luck. Near West Design Review, Gas City New Construction Seeking Final Approval. This receives schematic approval with conditions on March sixth. This is at thirty seventy-four West Fourteenth Street. Who do we have for this one?
Mr. Chairman, we have Carlton Moore for this project.
Carlton, are you out there?
Yes, I am. Can, can everyone hear me?
I can hear you fine. Thank you.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for looking at our project. Should I go right ahead now?
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Just let me know when to change your slides.
Okay, we can just start right there at the site plan. As you know, we came before this committee for preliminary site design approval and we, we got that from you. We've also gone before the Near West Design Review Committee. We had our second follow-up meeting within the past week and we received approval on that. Based on the last time that we met, there were comments that were made and we made those changes and revisions to it. And the comments were designed canvas. If you could switch over to the elevations, please. Next, next slide.
Can you see it okay? We can see an elevation.
I was saying if you could just, on that slide alone, I'll, I'll address issues. Previously, we, we were using a standing seam metal awnings. It was suggested from the design review committee that we revise that to canvas or either vinyl awnings. They addressed on, if you could switch to the site plan. On the site plan, at the northern entrance driveway, the exposed corner along West Fourteenth Street entranceway, consider landscaping or slash benches at that area. And the third, the third comment was right at the intersection of West Fourteenth and Clark, right at the corner of the building, modify the corner of the building at West Fourteenth or, and Clark Avenue to present a front on both West Fourteenth and Clark. They asked that we consider doing a second gable or dormer on the West Fourteenth facade. Based on the comments that were made from design review, we were, we came back and were able to address each of the issues. The issues that we addressed, we agreed to change the awnings from standing seam metal roof, standing seam metal awnings to a vinyl awning. We added on, hold that, hold that elevation right there. At that corner there, we added additional landscaping up against the building. Before we had eight-foot concrete sidewalk there, we reduced that down to four feet and added four feet of additional landscaping at that area. We also incorporated bicycle racks at that location. For, for those who are, who would travel to this site, either walking or riding their bike, we've added additional bicycle racks at that location. Also at that location, we've added a monument sign, a pricing sign, as you can see, right to the right of that, a pricing sign was added for the design committee's review. If you could, if you could switch back to the site plan. On the site plan, the question was raised at the last planning commission meeting, was the convenience store accessible from both the parking lot side as well as the sidewalk? And yes, it will be so that anyone walking along West Fourteenth Street, I'm sorry, anyone walking along Clark Avenue could access the convenience store from Clark Avenue. You can accept, it's accessible from pedestrian, walking up on Clark Avenue to the convenience store. And to accommodate that, we moved the building off the property line three feet so that the entrance door, doorways wouldn't impede on the public sidewalk area there. Also on the, on the northern, where, where you see the parking spaces, I think there are seven parking spaces along the northern property line. It was suggested by the committee that we include electrical charging parking spaces there and we've incorporated four charging spaces in that, at that where the seven parking spaces are. Four of them will be electrical charging spaces. On the elevations, if you can go to the elevation along Clark or either West Fourteenth, it was suggested that we incorporate, not that drawing, the next drawing. Along that, that elevation, we've incorporated gooseneck light fixtures, fixtures along both Clark Avenue as well as on West Fourteenth Street. There's no additional site lighting would be needed on this property due to the fact that we have a canopy with LED lighting and it will illuminate the parking, parking area. We just wanted to address the West, West Fourteenth elevation with gooseneck light fixtures as well as Clark Avenue. Those are the, oh. In our past design review committee meeting that we had, it was agreed that we would provide a planning schedule so that they can, so that the planning department will have final approval on what the planning, planning materials would be used at this site. They asked that for the bricks, I submitted a brick sample and they asked that we use a brick, a brick that uses a mortar joint and more of a traditional brick. And finally, as far as the corner treatment, if you can go to the perspective drawing again.
This one?
Yes. There was discussion before as what that corner would look like if we would add another gable, if we had a second entrance there. I presented in the last design review committee meeting with Near West. I presented in the last design review committee meeting with Near West, what that alternative look, would look like if we addressed it right along West Fourteenth Street. And they agreed that adding that additional gable or dormer on there made the, made the building look worse than what it presently was. So we agreed, uh, so it was agreed through design review to leave the elevation as it is, but they asked that the signage package come before their committee and they're asking that a strong signage presence be along, uh, for each of the, uh, tenant lease spaces along Clark Avenue as well as long West Fourteenth, that with a strong, uh, signage package, they felt as if that would bring the attention that's necessary for that corner. And those were all of the com- comments that we had. We seem to have addressed each one of them from design review and we were able to get final approval from them for our concept. Also, since the last meeting, we had an opportunity to meet with the councilman, uh, regarding this project and he gave his support for it. He had no concerns or objections to how we were presenting this project at the corner of West Fourteenth and Clark Avenue in his ward. Uh, with that, I have nothing else. Is there, Matt, is there anything you would like to add to this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we have Matt Moss with his hands raised.
Hey, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think Carlton did an excellent job explaining, uh, both the conditions from the schematic review as well as what the discussion was at Near West. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I just want to, uh, make the committee aware that this project follows a huge investment in planning process and involving many partners in the area for the Clark Avenue, uh, rehabilitation, reconstruction. That planning process involves the neighborhood residents, the development corporation, Trumount West, as well as the city of Cleveland. And so it's great to see this investment following that. It would also be, I, to my understanding, the first gas station, uh, new construction built in the city of Cleveland under the urban form overlay zoning. And so it's exciting to see this tool finally being used in practice for this particular type of use. And I think that it really, it really should, the, the strengths of that, that, uh, regulation really shine in this design. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if the commission has them as well.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have Councilman Brancatelli with his hand raised.
Councilman.
Hi, good morning or afternoon. Uh, I just want to echo my support. This is across the street from, but not in Ward twelve and, uh, had, uh, seen the design review early on. Appreciate all the changes and upgrades that were made to this particular project. Um, and as Matt said, this really fits the overlay quite well for this district and will complement this area, uh, in a very, very positive way.
Thank you, Carlton.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have Khalid wishing to comment.
Khalid. So, uh, just to give the community's viewpoint on this, uh, they're still would like this, uh, developer to come back at some point in time and talk directly to the owners of, uh, West Fourteenth and Clark. But, uh, as far as the project itself concerned, everybody loves the site plan, uh, which the urban form overlay dictates. Uh, that's, uh, so that minimum requirement is met. Uh, there was a lot of discussing around the actual design of the building, uh, and so, um, sort of like redesigning it, but, uh, the corner was a, a problem for the community for, for the most part. Um, it's gone to design review, uh, a couple of times and, uh, had plenty of discussing around it. Uh, there were a couple of different alternatives proposed. Uh, uh, it is what it is right now, so, um, there were, you know, Mr. Moore did make some other changes that, that has been noted already. Um, but at this point, we just want to make sure before it goes to permit that he does have that final meeting with those owners to let him know, uh, let them know what's going on in the community. He did, uh, he did go to our economic development committee who, um, passed, who passed it with the, uh, who supported it with the notion that, not passed, who supported it with the notion that they, uh, reviewed that corner a little bit more, which we discussed in, in design review, uh, and also that it, uh, go to community. It did not go to block club and the block club, um, the block club chairs wanted, uh, that final meeting with the owners there as part of the, um, stipulation. So, uh, that's where the community stands on this project, uh, and they do look forward to this investment, uh, and, uh, it'll be a big improvement over what's there now.
Thank you. Thank you, Khalid.
Mr. Chairman, we have no other hands raised at this point.
All right, uh, commission members?
I move approval, Downing.
I'll second, Paul.
Motion and second, further discussion. Harry Nunn, call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Good luck to everyone.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate it, your input.
Fulton Road Townhomes, new construction. This is at twenty-three hundred Fulton Road.
Mr. Chairman, we have Hannah Cohen from Canes. We have Gillian Hall, Michael David, and Christina.
Good morning. Uh, can you, can you all raise your hand so I can swear you in? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall enter under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
Go ahead.
Afternoon, everybody. Uh, this is the longest planning commission meeting I've ever been at, so I'll keep it as brief as possible. Um, this was the site on the corner of Fulton and Bailey, former junkyard. We received schematic design approval a few weeks ago from city planning. We returned to design review where we received final approval and now we're getting final appro- final approval from city planning. Um, Hannah's gonna discuss some of the minor changes that we've made since you've last seen us and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Maurice, can you, um, go forward to our site plan, please?
Thank you. So as Mike mentioned, we are on the southwest corner of Fulton and Bailey. We are proposing a townhome project with fifty-six units organized around a large central courtyard as a public green space. Um, we could just move the slides forward to the site plan, please? As Mike mentioned, we received final approval at design review recently, um, with some comments about studying and addressing some of the side elevations of the buildings further. So that's something that we are working on currently, um, with staff for administrative approval. So the architecture and the site plan have not changed significantly since you last saw this for schematic approval. Um, if we could just move the slides forward, please? We have flushed out the final materials for the project and added some of the site features to our presentation, so you can see those. Next slide, please. This is our site plan, as I mentioned, with the fifty-six units organized around the large central courtyard. Um, we're holding a strong street presence on Fulton and on Bailey. Um, we have porches on all of the units that are fronting on Fulton and Bailey to activate the streetscape. And, um, all of the units have some sort of private outdoor space, whether it be a porch or a roof deck or a balcony. Uh, next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is the aerial view from the corner of Fulton and Bailey, so you can see, um, we wanted to keep the architecture respectful of the existing context, but also bring a little bit of a contemporary twist to it. Uh, next slide, please. And if you could just, um, go through maybe all of the elevation sheets, you can see the different building typologies and configurations. The materials are primarily brick and siding. We have a few different colors palette mixed throughout the site, so there is some cohesiveness to it, but it's not monotonous and all the same. This is our material sheet, so you can see a little bit more of the colors and the textures that we are working with. Um, we have two brick colors and four siding colors that you can see there as well as asphalt shingle roofing to fit in with the neighborhood and some more contemporary entry doors, lighting, and railings. Uh, next slide, please. This is our plantings, um, with a sample of what's included in our landscape plan, which is in this presentation, if you need to look at it further for specific species. Uh, next slide, please. These are some of our site furnishings and this is new to you. Um, we have samples of bike racks, sight lighting, uh, benches, wayfinding signage, as well as a custom design. We're calling it an entry trellis that you can see on the left-hand side. Um, one of design review's comments was, we've been to make sure we're clearly demarcating entryways, pedestrian entryways into the site. So this is a feature that we think will really add to the development and, uh, make it very clear where the pedestrian entries to the site are, as well as bringing a design element to the project. Uh, next slide, please. These are the renderings. On the top is the corner at Fulton and Bailey and the lower one is Bailey. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the aerial again, uh, next slide, please. And then this is our landscape plan. So in summary, the site plan, um, should be familiar to you. We have just flushed out some of the details since our schematic approval meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a statement that just came in, uh, from a Ohio City resident that they would like read at the meeting.
Okay, go ahead.
This is from Fay Harris. To protect the city of Cleveland, will a developer indemnify it against any lawsuits, future residents linked to health-related claims, including cancers and other ailments allegedly linked to soil contamination? Will the developer provide the city of Cleveland, planning commission members, and the law department from an approved Ohio EPA and US EPA company to perform a site assessment, phase one, two, and three, instead of an outdated 2013 evaluation? Also, will the city's fire department be able to have access, all units, in case of a fire? Fifty-seven units are very dense for the six-acre site. Sincerely, Fay Harris, Ohio City resident.
Thank you. I'm guessing through the, uh, approval process to pull a permit, they have to go to fire, so. What, what did you use as far as, uh, obviously when you finance this, you have to have a phase one and phase two?
Yeah, we actually are working with SME on the remediation and I'm not sure what 2013, uh, is one she's mentioning. Um, I'm just not sure what she's talking about, um, but we've retained SME and we are working with them to remediate the site.
Okay, so are you going under the VAT program or how are you, how are you addressing?
Um, we've, they've laid out, uh, different mitigation plans, uh, based on, we're covering, um, so some of the roadways are intentionally laid out to cover, uh, some of the contaminated soils and we also have, um, radon mitigation systems and there might be another vapor, uh, system that we will need to, uh, implement on the buildings. Um, but we wanted to get, uh, everything finalized through planning commission before we've, uh, finalize any of our plans, just in case something changed.
No, I get that because when you talk about covers and stuff under, you know, getting enough further action, covenant not to sue through the state of Ohio, um, you want to know what you're building first because that's how you delineate your coverage and stuff. So she has a good point. It sounds like you're going down that same direction. I would just say, you know, make sure they're a certified professional and, um, good luck.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
I have no more people with their hands raised, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, members?
I take, I take that back. We have Donna Gregonis.
Hi, good afternoon. Donna Gregonis with Ohio City Incorporated. Um, I know I, I know I stated this in the past, but, um, we wanted to see more detail and attention placed on the corner units, um, and it seems that nothing has been updated on that point. And I know they brought it up, that design review wanted to see more attention placed on these as well. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that we brought that up for the rocker.
Um, thanks, Donna. Just to address your comment, that is something that we're currently working through with planning staff administratively. We were told by planning that we could go forward with planning approval while those details were still being ironed out, with the understanding that, I mean, they will have to be approved administratively.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Moss with his hand raised.
Hey, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I wanted to thank Donna for bringing that up because that was, I think, an important discussion point with the local design review committee. And just to elaborate, uh, just a little bit more, uh, the details of the units, especially that side, um, the, the alleyways, that you see some units in the central part of the site plan that have a majority of their side face on the street. The design review committee was really concerned about how the final details of those facades will feel because they're so close to the street and because so much of them is exposed, as well as the corner detail on, of the unit on Fulton. And so I think as a sta- a staff, we're happy to work with the development team if, if it's the commission's desire to refine those details, to make sure that they're adequate, you know, of course, in partnership with the development corporation to make sure that, that, uh, they're treated appropriately and that they're, they're not, that, that, that those sides respect the, the amount of pedestrian traffic that will likely be passing by them and, and through those street connections.
Thanks for your help, Matt. Um, so for the applicant, just so you know, i- if this gains approval, um, it would obviously go back to staff for those details. Um, you know, you would need to work out something with Matt and the staff, uh, that they believe was the direction of the planning mission and design review. If you were not able to do that, you would have to come back. If you were able to do it, then you could just move forward. You understand that?
Yes, we understand that. Thank you.
Okay. Commission members? I take a motion, then?
I'm sorry, we have, uh, one person that, uh, would like to also comment.
Okay, who is that?
Uh, we have Jorge Ramirez. Yes.
Uh, yes, I'm the, I'm George, about the parcel. The parcel split.
Yeah, that, I believe we dealt with that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, that, that was from before, so we're on to another matter.
Okay.
This is Matt Moss. I did, uh, chat with Mr. Ramirez through the webex to send him my contact info, so I'm trying to connect with him.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you. Okay. Then we have no one, no other hands raised. Thank you.
Okay, so I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will move approval, um, uh, of this, uh, with, I want to make sure I'm getting this right, uh, in- including the, uh, uh, conditions brought forth by design review.
Right, going back to staff. Okay, good. We have a motion? Can I get a second?
Second, Downing.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion. Harry Nunn, call the roll, please. Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Paul. Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay, design review, St. Agnes, Our Lady of Fat Meda, expansion, new addition. Who's here for this?
One second, please. Yeah, we have Gregory Ernst. We are, uh, we already approved the folk, the Wade Park, uh, design review, correct? So we're moving past that.
Yeah, we, we did that, um, when we did the.
Gregory Ernst. Sorry, you can hear yourself and go ahead.
Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
I need to swear you in. Can you raise your right hand?
Yes.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you now is a social hall addition to an existing church. The existing church was built in 2015 and the addition is taking down the existing social hall that exists on the east side of the parcel and adding a new 11,200 square foot social hall slash gymnasium space. As you can see on the site plan here, we have an additional parking lot to the east that has 15-foot setbacks with appropriate landscape buffers all the way around. And then the building is in the white portion at the center. If you go to the next slide, please. So here is the addition that we are proposing. In the background there on the right-hand side is the existing church. We're using all the same existing materials that match the existing church that was done in 2015. It'll be masonry building with board battening up at the top portion there, the dormers, the pattern of the dormer windows match what's on the existing church building. And we are extending over the lower portion with the shed roof from the east to the west. If you go to the next slide, please. So this just shows you the massing. We wanted to be respective of the height of the existing sanctuary, which is shown on the right-hand side. The main entrance is shown on the right side underneath the bell tower. And obviously, in order to get enough height for the gymnasium, we kept the pitch of the roof down to 412 to not overpower the existing sanctuary. And also just feel that this really gives a nice balance to the site and finishes off the building. That project that was started five years ago, wanted to make it seem continuous and cohesive. If you can go to the next slide, please. So here's a view from the southeast corner. The main entrance to the gymnasium is on the right-hand side. It's shown by the roof protrusion there. And on the left-hand side of this image, there is a courtyard between the existing building and the new building, which if you go to the next slide, you'll see that a little bit better. So this is an outdoor courtyard area for, they plan on having weddings in the new social hall space. And we do have a gallery slash cafe, which is shown in the courtyard area with the three windows in the background there. So this would kind of be a queuing area or spillover area for weddings and larger gatherings for the church. Go to the next slide, please.
That's all I have.
That's all you have. So as I mentioned, all of the materials match the existing building. We aren't introducing any new materials. And I do have existing photos and landscape page if you guys want to see that, or that's about it.
Looks good. Commission members?
I move approval Downing.
Second, Paul.
Motion and second, further discussion. During none, call the roll.
Bowen. Downing.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one. Brooks CCF Biorepository, new construction seeking final approval. Who's here for this one?
Mr. Chairman, we have Brandon Klein from Geis Companies. Mr. Klein?
Brandon, are you there?
I'm not seeing his name in the participant list.
Uh-oh.
Hello?
Hello? Hello?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi. Sorry, this is Jen Diazio with Geis Construction.
So are you going to be presenting this today?
I am. Brandon had a conflict with the length of the meeting, so I am prepared to present.
Again, your name for the record, I couldn't hear it.
Jen Diazio, D-I-A-Z-O. Hi.
Hi. Can you raise your right hand? I'm going to swear you in. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thanks, Jen. Go ahead.
Okay, so we have, I believe you have seen this project once, if not twice before. It was originally on a site a few blocks down. We do have preliminary review. We were back in design review on 5/26. But just a general overview of the project. And next slide, please. Between Cedar, 97th and 100th, the kind of conglomeration of parcels put together. Two-story building, 22,000 square feet, and a partnership between Cleveland Clinic, Hemingway Development, and the tenant, Brooks Life Sciences.
I remember those.
Yeah, so I'm not sure how much you want me to talk about from what you remember originally. We worked with CT consultants, a landscape architect, creating the plan you see here. And I believe there's some more detail on it further on. Drive lane, main access coming in off of 97th with our mechanical yard tucked behind the building. Next slide, please. We went back to design review with our site lighting package, fairly simple on the building at the entrance ways and some on the south facade. And then pole lights, obviously, in our parking lot areas to keep that lit. Next slide, please. So the heavier blue line here is our consolidated parcel and reference to the neighbors next to and to the south of us, for your reference. Next slide, please. And some context of where we are, what is there now. Looking east and west at the site. Next slide, please. Our neighbors, the GCIC, IBM Explorers, and the parking garage. Next slide, please. Overall civil site plan, not as pretty as the colored one, but lots of detail on it for you. Next slide. Going back to landscape, you can see we've done the street trees along Cedar and along East 100th, although based on feedback from the clinic, they change type of tree. And then kind of our tree park on the left, a stone area inset with trees and some benches for public seating. Next slide, please. Details of that landscape plan in the upper right, the gravel plaza. I mentioned kind of the tree park. The benches proposed. The stone mow strip will go around the building. The red sunset maples along Cedar. Next slide, please. Massing studies created by Cleveland Clinic. Looking at context of the neighbors. Next slide, please. Overall floor plans, basically Brooks Life Sciences freezer storage, which is what all those white boxes, 400 of them as a matter of fact, represent. Next slide, please. And our renderings looking west, east, or from the east. Next slide, please. And from the opposite side looking south. Next slide, please. Overall elevations. I know there was earlier conversation about just being respectful of our south elevation. Have taken all of those comments into account. Next slide, please. Materials for the building. We have a combination of champagne and clear anodized mullions. The majority of the building in that GRFC, got the letters right, cladding and a white spandrel glass, pretty straightforward. Next slide, please. And you'll see this slide in the next few, the detail we have put in place to the glass, the depth, the mullions, just creating detail in that large glass facade. Next slide, please. And here you can see those details. Thank you. Next. Next. We did also discuss signage with design review and on the east and west elevations, these were blessed at design review for location and concept. Next. Some details on the mechanical yard, obviously kind of large and a concern for most. We are building it out of masonry, white smooth, and the galvanized grates, a little more decorative than your typical board-on-board. Will look very appropriate for the neighborhood. Next, please. And similarly, on the dumpster enclosure. I think that wraps up the presentation. A couple sheets of what you had previously seen, not very different from what we're showing today. So I will just address the three changes from design review. One was that they had requested we move the location of some benches, which we have complied with. They asked for an electric pole box, a utility box to come out of the tree line on Cedar, which we are fine complying with. And they talked about adding pedestrian-level signage at the front door or on the site and we do not have that fully designed resolved yet, but we are fine with going ahead with that.
Okay, and that can be reviewed by staff. Commission members, any questions?
I move approval with the recommendations from Design Review Incorporated. Downing.
I'll second.
A second, further discussion? During none, call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide. Yes.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Proposed demolition of a two-story mixed-use building seeking final approval. This is at 6923 Union Avenue.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone.
Who do we have here?
Woo-Jo, City of Cleveland.
Since you're an employee, I don't need to swear you in.
Yes, sir. Yes, this is the proposed demolition at 6923 Union. Next slide. We'll just go through some of the pictures. We can go to the next slide, please. This is the site location is off the corner of Union and 70th. Slide. Just a little bit closer picture. Next slide will show you the exterior photos of the site building. Next slide. Some of the interior pictures. Next slide. Again, more interior pictures. And one more interior picture. Next slide. And we will, parcel will be greatest seeded for city Cleveland specifications.
I'll move approval. That one for architectural detail, that's for sure.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Okay, the next one is a proposed demolition of a one-story building, commercial building seeking approval. And this is at 7911 Carnegie. Who do we have for this one?
Mr. Chairman, we have, looks like Robert Abramovich.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. We also have another case that's part of... Go ahead.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you, Robert.
Mr., one second, please. We have Mr. Whitfield that raised his hand. Did you have a brief comment beforehand?
During the presentation, thank you. We are in support of this project and have been working with Mr. Abramovich for about a year. So I will, if I need to be sworn in, it's fine. If not, we'll continue on.
Thank you.
We have two, the following property also is part of a separate case. I don't know if you want to hear them consecutively or together. I'll leave that up to you.
Let's hear one at a time because we've got to take motions one at a time.
That's fine. Next slide, please. So northeast corner of East 79th and Carnegie Avenue. This is an overview at the district level. The property or properties are highlighted in red on the left-hand side of the screen. Next slide, please. A close-up aerial, again, northeast corner of East 79th and Carnegie. The property that we're talking about right now is 7911 Carnegie and it's the building on the hard corner identified on the aerial. Next slide, please. The demolition application is part of a greater redevelopment of the property. This slide talks a little bit about the redevelopment, but a financial center on a to-be-consolidated lot of approximately 0.8 acres. Next slide, please. Again, the existing structure at 7911 is a vacant commercial building. It was at one time a gas station, I believe, an oil change facility, and most recently a check cashing facility. Next slide, please. Existing conditions, so heading east on Carnegie, we've in the inset in the photo identified the site on the corner. Next slide, please. And then this is heading west on Carnegie. Next slide, please. We'll skip over this one. Next slide, please. Existing conditions, this is the exterior, an angle shot of the front of the building on the left and then the side or east-facing portion of the building on the right. Next slide, please. These are some select interior photos of the existing building. It had been partially demolished or taken apart. Next slide, please. This is for the next case. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And then this is a proposed site plan that was presented to the Euclid Corridor Committee. And I will say that at that meeting, there was some discussion and a relatively strong preference to relocate the building up to and along the street front in more of an urban streetscape format and in line with the corridor study that was done. So I will say that while this site plan doesn't maybe pertain to the actual demo application, I did want to let the planning commission know that we are working with our end user and our tenant and will have, when we come before you, a site plan that is in line with the corridor study and aligned with the local community and their desires to have that building up on Carnegie or up at the corner. And that's the end of the presentation for 7911 Carnegie.
Thank you. Commission members?
I move approval Downing.
I'll second.
I'll second. Paul.
Second, further discussion. Calling the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Okay, Robert, we're going to move on to the two-and-a-half-story building that's on 2061 East Seventy-Ninth Street.
Okay, if you can back up to maybe the third slide.
How far back?
Let's go a couple more. Slide three, if you...
Slide three, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to show the aerial. There you go. Okay, so aerial 2061 is the orange-brownish, single-family home. It's flanked by two city of Cleveland land bank lots. Next slide, please. Same discussion as the, as the last go-around. Next slide, please. Demolition application or seeking permit or approval for 2061 East Seventy-Ninth. It's a single-family residential home. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. The single-family home is shown here on a street view from southbound East Seventy-Ninth Street. The land bank properties that I mentioned are shown in the photo. That is the home. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. These are exterior photos of the existing home. Next slide, please. Interior photos of the existing conditions at the, at the 2061 East Seventy-Ninth. Next slide, please. And then the site plan that we spoke of on the prior case. These are some elevations, architectural, and then there's some, also some color elevations if you continue to scroll. A proposed floor plan, but we will be coming back with a full and thorough package for our full planning commission approval. Thank you.
Commission members?
Move approval. Downing.
Second, slide.
Motion second, further discussion. Calling the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you. Have a great weekend.
You too. Downtown Flats Design Review, Flats Platform Tennis Center, new construction. Ken, what left, huh?
Yeah. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. For having us in this jam-packed agenda.
We try to save the best for last, right?
Of course, of course. I would like to thank Mr. Chairman Bowen, commission members, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having us. We really appreciate it.
I'm going to have to swear you in, Ken. Do you sound like you swear to tell the truth, the, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman of the Board, we're the Cleveland Platform Tennis Foundation. It's a group of about 11 guys and gals who formed a board to raise money and bring paddle tennis to the city of Cleveland for people who otherwise would not be able to play paddle tennis. We're lucky enough to have negotiated a great deal with Cleveland Rowing Foundation as a tenant to be on their property to kind of create this, we've got a lot of recreation down in the flats. As you guys know, we have volleyball, we're going to have paddle tennis, got Cleveland Rowing Foundation. So there's a lot of things we are moving forward with in the city of Cleveland with your approval, of course, to kind of create this recreation atmosphere down in the flats. Next slide, please. Next slide. This is the location, the aerial view of the site. As you can see, to the west is the Cleveland Rowing Foundation, and adjacent to that will be the paddle tennis courts. Next slide, please. This is looking northwest down British. Next slide. This is looking south directly into the site. Next slide. That's looking a little bit northeast from the site. Next slide. That's looking west from the site. Next slide. That's looking due west from the site as well. Next slide. Looking due east. Next slide. And this is the site plan of the proposed paddle courts and what we call is a warming hut in the middle. As you can see where it comes down, it's going to meet the British and Falls Street on the Cleveland Rowing Foundation property. Next slide, please. Next slide. This is the floor plan layout with the courts and the deck area. Next, please. This is some detailed drawings of actually the platform tennis court. Next slide, please. In section, next slide, please. And this is the elevations of the warming hut. Next slide, please. Sections of the warming hut. Next slide, please. Signage, we got, our board agreed to the orange and the design review before this agreed the orange is the best signing as well. Next slide, please. And this is, you can just start to see the form of the building and the courts coming together in the rendering. That's the main entry. Next slide. Different perspective of the entry. Next slide, please. Entry and deck stairs to the entry. Next slide, please. Backs on view. Next slide, please. From the courts. Next slide, please. And from inside. Next slide, please. That's it. Any, any questions from the commission?
Commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Director Collier, I do have one question. A great project, but one of the things with respect to the Kyle Hugger River Valley that we want to see happen is to ensure that it's accessible. So the question I have is more programmatic. Is this facility open to the public or is it private?
It is public. Great, great question. It is public. We are emulating the model of urban squash that's charged because paddle tennis is a country club sport, and we are bringing it to the city of Cleveland as a public court facility with, but it's going to be accessible to people who have never played paddle before. With program.
That's great. You know, I may want to highlight too, Mr. Chairman, you, I'm sure you're familiar with the foundry. They do a lot of great programming with CMSD and Urban Youth to expose kids to rowing. So they may be really a good, they're obviously a neighbor because they're not far from you, but they would be a good model to kind of emulate with respect to making sure that the exposure to this, you know, reaches all folks in the city of Cleveland.
Correct. Agreed. Agreed. Mr. Kurt, who was on before, he's the executive director of the Rowing Foundation. Kurt, do you want to say anything?
Sure, Ken. Thanks, I appreciate it. No, we really look forward to this future partnership with CPTF. So it's been a great partnership, I believe, over the past, I think Ken's been maybe 12, 18 months now trying to get this deal, this deal completed. Just one thing to note to the committee and to the chair and to the entire board. The Cleveland Rowing Foundation also has partnered with CMSD and has several other outreach programs that we hope to also partner with CPTF on, along with the site center, our adaptive and para and veteran rowers, along with high school programs. So I do think this is going to be just a great nexus, if you will, with the preparation with having the skate park, tennis, rowing, as well as Marin's Wharf right upstream from us. So this is going to be, I think, a huge asset and really add to the flats. So I'm, obviously, I'm very in support of this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Mr. Chairman, this is Stomy Paul. Just have a question. I can't tell by the renderings, but are the tennis courts accessible for wheelchair? And is the complex wheelchair accessible?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. As you can see in the plan, as you can see in, we have a, I think the second page, we back, back, this, we, we, we started with an elevator ramp, I'm not, not an elevator ramp, a lift that we're most likely going to move to the front because we've been negotiating with Cleveland Rowing Foundation, an exact fit. So we're going to slide that in next to the stairs on the front. It'll be better for us because we don't, we don't own the land. So that's going to move to the front stairs of the entry. Yes, but we have wheels X, the tan cap exit. Yes, it is. Five foot in between all the walkways to get to the court.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, we have no other hands raised at this time.
I move approval. Downing.
Second. Paul.
Motion in second, further discussion. Calling the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you very much, guys. Take care.
You too. Nice to see you.
You too.
We have a special presentation.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'm visible here. And thank you, commission members. Thank you for inviting us all here to lunch. Appreciate that.
So Freddie, I got a question for you before we get started in the special presentation. Do I swear I'm in for this? Are we doing an approval?
This is the land use plan. Yes, this would be an approval. So yeah, I would, I would go ahead and swear I'm in.
Okay. If you can raise your right hand, do you sound like you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Do.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you again for this opportunity to present the culmination of a lot of work. I'm one presenter, but there is a couple other people on the team, which I'll, I think, present as the deck continues in a moment. And then also want to thank all the community members in Tremont West and the steering committee for what you see in front of you. You might see more of it than you hear. I don't intend to go through each and every slide and explaining it. So if there are moments where the committee members have questions, I'm happy to stop and explain. But again, in the interest of time, I'm going to try to move ahead through the points that are maybe the most salient for today's conversation. Sure. So you can advance the slide. Thank you. So essentially, here's, that was the presentation overview. So the team members are, myself, I led the team through my company Seventh Hill. We also had Ben Clifford Herring on the team. He's an architectural designer. And then someone that might look familiar, Bob Brown, also on our team, can advance. This is the, pardon me, where is he from?
Yeah.
I think Cleveland Heights, but I'm not sure. Not Cleveland, I don't know. So this is the, the project area that we focused on, which is increasingly referred to as Lincoln Heights. Of course, it's part of the Tremont neighborhood, but it's essentially that section of Tremont between West Twenty-Fifth Street, I-71, and then Fairfield to the north. And then the steering committee recommended that we extend the study area south of I-49 to include Wade Avenue. Okay, so next. Here's some historic photos to set the stage for committee members. Next, as you can see in some places, things haven't changed that much in a long time. Continue. This is another shot. Continue. Where things haven't changed all that much, the land use and the kind of visibility of the buildings in the background have, but this has changed. This at Kennelworth, a shot from 1933 and today, there's a highway there. So this is one of the critical challenges that was at the core of this project was how do we deal with some of these ruptures to the fabric that were created by the highway? So this is an overview of our timeline. As you can see, the main takeaway here is we had several points of engagement from July to February when we wrapped up the project. So it's great to now have the opportunity to present before you. I know we intended to present much earlier. Next. And we had several forms of engagement in this plan, including community events, focus groups, user experience walks with residents, and even at night, so we could get very detailed feedback. Again, this was before the quarantine, so we're all huddled dangerously close. And one of the takeaways here that you'll see again later in the plan is this view, this vista is something that we wanted to retain of the skyline downtown. So you'll see how we incorporate it later. Next, so summary of community feedback. Basically, we collected a lot of insights from folks in different ways. And this, starting off with this sort of common SWOT analysis, so you can continue. And the way we organized it here is you can see comments, the high-level comments that we heard at the community events, and then information that we heard in the focus group. And this focus, this first focus, primarily property owners, developers, folks interested in real estate. So we found it interesting to see how much overlap we had between the broad community feedback and this individual stakeholder groups. That's what you'll see here. Continue. Some of the weaknesses were visual blight, mobility challenges, and amended general amenities in the neighborhood. Next. But opportunities, we saw some of the development sites, transit access, and opportunity to create more connections through the neighborhood. Next. But some of the threats were significant. And again, shared, the, the problem of lack of affordability came, came through, parking challenges, and also need for design guidelines. Continue. Thanks. So through all that feedback, we established five high-level project goals. Again, I won't go through each of these necessarily right now, but from the project goals, you can go to the next slide. What we did was organize a series of strategies that specifically respond to each one of those goals. So as you can see, there's established a community vision for the character scale and uses of new development. And underneath that, there's specific strategies that help us achieve that goal over time. Next. One of the top priorities, actually from the very beginning of the project before we were even hired, was to address the parking challenges. So I will take a little bit of a deeper dive into this as one example of how we approached the problem to address parking. So next, let's highlight 3.3, identify best opportunities for shared parking. Next. And the way we did that was tried to be very meticulous and detailed in our assessment of existing parking and what parking is planned in the future so that we can at least help give community members solid information to make informed decisions. So from this, again, we, and then Ben Herring, who's on our team, spent quite a bit of time on this in particular. So looked at the amount of residential, commercial, institutional parking. Next. And then one of the takeaways were, these are three shared parking areas where we felt there could be quite a bit of overlap and collaboration between existing properties and developed, properties that are being developed. Next. And we came to this conclusion by identifying what are the current customer destinations, as you can see listed on the left, the type, and then looking at what's their current parking right now and what is the required parking by code. And one of the interesting takeaways is that, in fact, there's a little bit more parking available than required, but residents have the challenge then of, well, why doesn't it feel like there's enough parking? That's the problem, right? So these numbers mean one thing. But residents have the challenge then of, well, why doesn't it feel like there's enough parking? That's the problem, right? So these numbers mean one thing. But then we could take a deeper dive into why doesn't it feel like there's enough parking. Next. So we looked at, you know, using these Gantt charts to identify, well, when is the parking used based on the different uses? So for a typical Monday, you can see the uses on the left and when they're actually used. And then you find out that there's a lot of um times during the day where people feel like they may not have enough parking or at evening. But uh in fact, there is, I'll show you some other slides to, to illustrate this. Next. Um, so the way we got some more detailed parking data was uh we flew a drone over the neighborhood to get the most uh current aerial information on the site because things are changing very rapidly here. So none of the aerials that we had access to were accurate. And then using that aerial data, we could uh count parking spots that are off-street, that are hidden, and um, you know, just accurate to today. Next. And then um this was an updated parking inventory map where um we can see the range of commercial, residential, institutional, and street parking uh available. Next. Uh, and then you get these kind of graphs at the end of the day where uh eventually it funnels down into what's the parking utilization. So uh in some places, like the Nestle Lot, uh it's at only eleven percent. So uh in the bottom right, you can see that the parking utilization is eleven percent taken at a time uh when typical parking counts are done in the late evening. So uh I think sometime between uh one and three uh or so the numbers were counted um on a couple of different days. So the takeaway is that there are a significant number of parking spots, but the problem is how are they coordinated in a way uh when they're needed so that residents and visitors feel like there's uh, there's enough and you don't necessarily have to build more. Next. Yep. And then in terms of street parking, there's a new uh street renovation done. So those numbers were also counted. So there's a total of three hundred and forty-six parking spots available on the street. And uh at the times when they were counted, only ninety-nine were used, which means only twenty-nine percent of that street is utilized. So now how do we connect the dots between availability and when people use it? Next. Uh, fourteen percent on Scranton, in fact, so it's even lower. Next. Again, I'm kind of flying through this a bit, but one was, the one response was the initial recommendation to create these shared parking agreements. And another uh idea was to use park sharing applications. These are uh apps that are becoming more common now where they actually use um artificial intelligence to identify where the cars are within a parking lot. And then can provide real-time data to a building owner or users on where parking spots are available. Because again, there's just this mismatch between um awareness of supply and actual supply. So on the left is just a few of the parking apps that are available for this, and they can be incorporated into an existing uh video camera that most of these locations have available for security purposes. Next. Okay, so um fortunately, uh we um had great feedback from the community. Again, since they saw that we were so thorough in the parking analysis, and even though some people were reluctant to admit that uh there is capacity for parking, I believe that we were able to move forward together in, in, at the level of trust in making some of those recommendations. And in fact, some of those parking, shared parking agreements have already um been instituted. So moving forward, um with mobility connections, there's a range of recommendations from transportation to uh pathways and roadways that can help connect West Twenty-Fifth Street to Scranton. And then you'll see some of those illustrated in the plan. Next. Uh, so one in particular, streetscape enhancements across Scranton and uh Willie. Next. Um, these are the priority corridors um that we identified through community input for streetscape improvement. And the north-south seems kind of obvious because that's the main drag, Scranton, and some of these improvements already been uh underway, but we, we believe there's opportunities to improve that. And then there's a priority on uh Kennelworth as an east-west connection because that provides access to Ohio City, Columbus Avenue, and the RTA station, and also east to um Lincoln Park, which again, if you remember from that photograph, it felt connected. Lincoln Park at one time felt like it was very close to Scranton before the highways were there. So we want to prioritize that in a few different ways. Next. Um, so uh reusing large-scale vacant land, of course, these are development sites. Uh, so we'll show you some examples of that. Next. Uh, next. So affordable, affordability was a key component to the project, and one of the recommendations that came through um a co- the conversation with uh residents, the block club, property owners, and uh Tremont West was um using some of the recommendations in the housing inclusion on the near west side white paper as a basis for a specific recommendation in this neighborhood, as well as recommendation that was developed in the Duck Island Master Plan. Um, next. So essentially, here are some of the details from a recommended developers fund, which we recognize that the completion of our project would need to be, you know, vetted and, and maybe even detailed more specifically with the CDC and the different partners. But I think uh we were able to come to a pretty um clear alignment between expectations and the block club in particular. Um, so essentially, I don't know if I should go through much of this in, in detail, but essentially, it's a mechanism to provide a fund, to build a fund over time uh that can then be used uh through um, you know, an approval process through Tremont West staff, the block club, and developer representatives to use that fund for um existing residents uh improvements to their homes. Various expenses that could potentially become so uh create a serious affordability issue for residents, forcing them to leave the neighborhood. But by providing some of these smaller-scale grants out of this developers fund, it may allow residents to retain their home uh and stay in the neighborhood. So uh this is like one prong of a multi-prong approach for affordability. Uh, this one, in some ways, geared more towards existing residents and seniors that are having a hard time paying their uh taxes. And then there's a, a requirement as well for um affordability built into properties that would use city land bank lots or other sorts of city incentives. And that's uh on the next slide. Um, so these are the recommendations. Essentially, again, um building off the white paper, but being a little bit more specific. One, advance and refine the proposed developers fund, which I showed you. Uh, may need some more flexibility. That's where we left it with, with everybody. Next, development projects utilizing city land. Um, okay, well, you don't have to read it all. Uh, vision plans, I'll show you the images. Uh, okay, thanks. And then no worries, I can take it, I can take it, I can take it.
I hit it by mistake. Did you want, do you want to go forward or stay where we're at?
Here for one second then. So then the third point is um, you know, pursue some of the other actions that we think are pretty excellent in that housing inclusion white paper. And then lastly, you need to continue to monitor the changing housing data um because I think that's a really critical element of this, that there was a lot of time spent in uh in the past in twenty seventeen, creating this sort of um these goals or objectives over time in different categories of affordability. And uh we need to monitor those, well, particularly now since we're in a very different economic place than we were when this report was completed just months ago. Okay, that's it. Thank you. You can advance. Okay, so these are the, these are the pretty drawings. So this is a, a plan of the current land use. As you can see, there's eleven different land uses in just this small area. So that's definitely one of the characteristics of this place. Next. And one of the key problems we saw was street connectivity. So if you look at street connectivity currently, uh forty percent of the road segments terminate in the dead end. And for an urban neighborhood, that's kind of odd and a problem. Next. Um, so this is the recommended plan with uh about twenty-three different uh elements in it as recommendations. Some including um a projects that are already gone through uh approval and are just uh waiting to get built. Uh, but we were able to incorporate those into the plan, fortunately, uh including fifteen, which is the Lincoln Residential Building at the corner. At one of the key corners in the neighborhood on Scranton. So I'll advance now. And, and then again, if anyone has questions, we can go because the other images are more detailed. That's just an overview. So the way it kind of broke this up is existing conditions, plan, and image. And then next, you can see the proposal. So uh in this location, uh there's proposed development at West Twenty-Fifth Street and Potter Court area. So this is really the gateway into Lincoln Heights from the north, from Ohio City, as you cross the bridge. Um, go to the next slide, and I think it's easier to, to read. We tried to make the images very legible to a broad community, to the public, because sometimes these images can get a little wonky and, and people have a hard time reading land use plans. So the colors of the development are color-coded to typical land use projects um and then uh annotated, as you can see on the left. So at the corner of um West Twenty-Fifth Street, uh you could see number ten, for example, is a building that's currently um almost complete, I think, Saint Joseph's Commons. So the scale of some of the buildings are somewhat in keeping to that surrounding precedent. Uh, even though we did hear from some residents, there was like a concern with density and height. But some of the projects along West Twenty-Fifth Street, uh residents felt much more comfortable with even additional height than shown right now. Let's say for three, for example. Uh, it seemed pretty clear that residents would be comfortable with even more height there because there's overall a gradual um integration of that height from Twenty-Fifth Street down into the neighborhood. And I think that becomes pretty clear with the proposal. Next. Uh, and then these are some examples of that apartment, little, you know, five-story or higher, six, seven, even higher uh story development that residents found interesting to have a first floor. Um, you'd have a mixed-use building with a, with an active first floor uh along West Twenty-Fifth Street. Uh, was, was a, a strong desire. Next. Uh, next site. So this is a, a really critical site. This was, this is the APL-owned site primarily, as well as some additional sites along West Nineteenth Place that have uh some scattered um housing on it. Again, through the process of having the meetings, um walking the neighborhood with residents and getting very detailed feedback on which uh buildings people felt comfortable with, you know, are not really part of um the character of the neighborhood. Some are um homes that are being rented and don't really contribute to the street frontage. We got um strong feedback that new infill development on this site would be, you know, beneficial to the neighborhood character, to walkability, as well as something that could help pencil out for the APL. And number five, uh that new Revere Park, that's the spot of that photograph that I showed you from the beginning. So that's a spot that we, that residents felt was pretty uh valuable in terms of um retaining some identity and the quality of of something that they didn't like about um the, the neighborhood before additional development comes in. And making it more public and visible could actually support that goal. Um, of course, we're not geotechnical engineers, like that wasn't the scope of this project. So that's gonna be a big question in terms of what can be built and exactly where. We don't have that data available. So I think that will certainly have to happen in the future. But because of the sighting of a building like seven, you go to the next one, I think it's a better way to visualize the scale. Um, as you can see here in seven, having a building of like five stories or higher um would, seemed like it would have been a challenge to get approval from the neighborhood at the beginning of this project. But again, by working through a process of having people, of understanding what their concerns were and how a project like this could actually um seem more seamlessly get integrated into the neighborhood. We did get um very strong approval overall from um residents. And some of those being um, you know, kind of backing off development from the existing uh residents, like the same destroying on the right-hand side. We did hear concerns like, well, I don't want a new apartment building uh behind my building and people looking into my backyard, you know. So it's essentially that kind of concern of having an imposing structure that doesn't fit the context, you know, spring up in someone's backyard. So I think we were able to propose uh like significant amount of new density, but also provide something like nine, which is a greenway trail connection that provides a, a cut through the neighborhood that is needed because it's really hard to get from Revere to that um southern part of the neighborhood right now. So that public asset also helps spur development adjacent to it. So eight, the new townhomes that are not facing the main street would have a green space or park to look on to, and then also maintaining that kind of height um from uh east to west. Okay, continue. Again, I, I know there's so much in all these to, to share, so I'm trying to keep it relatively brief. Uh, and then some examples of townhomes that residents liked, including the one on the left that has a kind of shared courtyard or uh buildings that are townhomes that are looking onto a green space rather than looking onto the main street. Next. Okay, so this is on uh Willie and uh Columbus, um sort of inside our area, but sort of outside, but residents still wanted to um have us look, take a look at it. Next. So I think one of the key recommendations was, if anybody's been down the street, it's in, it's in disrepair right now. And a lot of community members that live in Lincoln Heights feel very uncomfortable walking down uh William back up to Columbus because of the um lack of uh, I mean, sidewalks are really crumbled, overgrown completely, lack of lighting. And not only the topography that goes uphill, that makes it a challenge, but all those things kind of combined to make it really uncomfortable. But it is the direction to the nearest Rapid Station, and it's really not that far. So the recommendations are primarily around streetscape improvements, eleven as um a new housing development. Uh, and then thirteen as mixed-use building on the corner that would have really fantastic views of downtown, even though it's kind of in the lower part along Train Avenue. Next. Uh, so this is another view of, of that area. So you can see on the bottom right is basically um where uh Lincoln is, the APL, you kind of go under the bridge, and then thirteen would be a new mixed-use development in the valley uh across from the industrial building, and then coming back uphill with a new streetscape and signage on Columbus that actually uh tells people, um, you know, Lincoln Park is this way and Tremont is in this direction, because I think it's a little un, less known right now. And as you can see in the kind of top left, uh that's the West Twenty-Fifth Street, Lorraine Avenue Rapid Station. So it's actually really not that far um and reasonable for folks that, that live here um to, to walk to the train. Next. Next, so this is Scranton and Kennelworth intersection. Uh, this is, and go to the next one. Probably a project that some of you are more familiar with, uh that includes uh the Lincoln Residential Building uh on the corner. And we're also recommending at sixteen a new pocket park on the corner um because there's a real lack of outdoor spaces. Now, again, we know this is before the age of COVID, when the design and implementation of public space becomes really important for safety. So all that would have to be, you know, uh incorporated into any design. But we did hear a lot of positive feedback around having uh an out, a smaller pocket parks along uh Scranton that uh enable a, a sense of neighborliness. Because ultimately, one of the core uh challenges that residents articulated was that some existing residents that have been here for a while said they don't feel like a sense of connection or neighborliness with new residents. And we think that in large part, that's because there's a lack of places to do that and to build those connections. So as coffee shops come on board um online, and um the bakery that's now open down in Tappan as well as public spaces that can, can facilitate neighborliness, I think that will go a long way towards that goal as well as programming. Next. And we're kind of wrapping up here. So these are some examples of the pocket parks that residents really liked and would love to see uh incorporated along the street. Next. Uh, this example of Du North Town Home is one of the projects that's already, you know, kind of in, in the running that we showed to residents. Uh, and then opportunities for streetscape improvements, particularly these underpasses. Next. Um, we, people have, people were in support of bright, vibrant, uh really punchy um at one of these locations in particular that can add a priority. Which are coming from Fourteenth Street, it may draw your eye and pull you into um uh the street to get to Scranton, which is kind of overlooked. Next. And another way to do it might be through storytelling, maybe uh highlight and um and cherish those historic places that aren't there anymore. People live in the neighborhood that remember the bakeries that used to be the, that, that were removed by the highway, the, the homes, the neighbors, and so forth. So that could be a way to tell that story. Next. Next. So this is moving further south. Um, next. Um, that includes the Tremont Tap House expansion and ways of managing the streetscape. You know, in a lot of ways, it'd be great to have a new building in that parking location. But there was some concern right now about ways to provide, you know, parking, uh to, ways to provide a, a building or a street edge. And I know that the, it seems like the business owner of Tap House, at least at the time, was interested in expanding operations. So perhaps that makes sense to build off. And at the same time, uh maybe even do a better example. But a real example that was built uh was here on West Twenty-Fifth Street with a canopy that has solar panels on it and could um provide a street edge. But have something even more maybe robust oh, along Scranton, uh and then provide outdoor seating. So the, the kind of yellow area between eighteen and nineteen could be an expanded outdoor patio uh for the Tap House uh that would further kind of activate the street frontage. Next. Next. I think this is the, the last section here. So this is the, the furthest south portion of um the project. So one of the suggestions here was, hey, if we're doing this planning project, there's no plan to remove the Scranton School right now, but let's take a look at that. What if something happened in the future and that school building was no longer necessary? Or there could be a rebuild of it, or, you know, what would we ideally like to see there? So this is a recommendation that includes where 20 is new residential development along Barber to highlight that street corridor. And then 21, a new mixed-use building or potentially a school building somehow on that corner that then, as you're entering from the south along Scranton, it creates more of a gateway experience into the neighborhood than it currently does because the building's, you know, kind of set back and doesn't really provide a presence there. And then the parking behind it could be beneficial for valet parking along the rest of Scranton. So for the businesses and bars located there, you wouldn't have to valet park onsite and add more parking. Use the existing parking as district parking for a lot of the businesses in the area. Okay, next. Here's a view of that sort of recommendation and the big picture. Yep, you can stop on the big picture, that's fine. Yeah, the big picture that, again, some of the key ideas to create connections within the neighborhood and outside of the neighborhood, focus density on some of the key corridors, and then improve, generally improve the quality of life through green spaces for all residents and future residents. Okay, I think that's it.
Mr. Chairman, we have no hands raised at this point.
Well, even though you had to blow it through, I
I take that back. We have Mr. Moss that would like to comment.
Okay, go ahead, Matt.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'll just keep it really brief. I want to really commend David, his team, as well as the steering committee and Tremont West. This was a really great project. David and his team really did a really wonderful job working with the residents in the area, explaining the issues, really digging into the data and making it relatable as well. So I think you did a fantastic job. All I'll say is that we have a lot of zoning in place that I think complements what the community is expecting from development sites in the area. And I really look forward to working with this plan with developers in order to meet the needs, the goals, and also build the community in the way the existing residents want to see, but also provide for residents who don't yet live here, who may want to. And may want to live here in a way where they can walk, drive, and take transit or bike as well. So thank you.
Great job, David. I agree. You know, I just asked staff if they could send it out to all the planning commission members so we can go back through the plan at a slower pace but not hold up the approval process. Can we make that happen, Freddie?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
All right. No, I don't, I don't have my hands raised. Can you repeat your question, sir? I'm sorry, I had it on mute.
Oh, no, Fred, so I'm just asking, I don't want to hold up the approval process. We had to go through this speedy because, you know, we're running out of time. But if you could send this presentation to all the planning commission members so we can go through it at our leisure, too, that'd be great.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Commission members? Taking approval?
Move approval.
Second, Downing.
Motion second, further discussion. David, I just want to say you did a fabulous job. Thanks so much. It's a lot to cover in a short period of time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, commission members, for your time.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
You're on mute.
Get my yes?
I just did now.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. Take care.
Far West Design Review Expansion, informational purposes only. Adam, are you still there?
You're muted, Adam. He is here, buddy. Adam? Adam?
Purpose line?
Yeah, he's muted. He's like he's frozen. Hold on.
Yeah, I think he was frozen.
There he is.
Are you there, Adam? All right. All right, you're cutting in and out.
The near west design review region overlaps a little bit with to extend up. And so applicants for these projects deal with Matt Moss with with the councilman if he so chooses and Detroit Shore. Was going through the entire city process. So we were looking at moving the far west region, which right now is Councilman Slice Ward, 17 slash the airport, all the way up to about West 85th Street to encompass my entire district through 415 and Gordon Square. And so it, the red half area actually enlarges the far west design by that much and shrinks the near west design region by that much to kind of now overlap two districts or two regions, sorry, two regions. And then applicants are only dealing with one staff member for project-related business.
Okay, now, this is just for our information.
Yeah, essentially, you see, kind of confused by who is reviewing those projects and where the geography is.
Seems like you've picked up some more territory.
In essence, yeah.
Okay. Well, good. You're gonna be busy. Any questions from commission members? I guess we'll adjourn the meeting. Unless you guys have something to add, Freddie?
Chairman, there's no director's detailed report today. I just wanted to say thanks to everyone for being patient. This was a marathon of a meeting. But I think everything was handled very well, with the exception of my dog. But other than that, I think everything went really well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I enjoyed your